Why don't you move that over in front of that thing so you're right in front of his little camera.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we're live. Good evening, Milis. I'm Loring Barnes. I am the Select Board Chair. I'm going to introduce my colleagues, make a brief opening statement. To my immediate left is James McCaffrey, the Vice Chair. To my far right, your left, by the magic of television, is our other board colleague, Peter Germain, who is being teleconferenced tonight by virtue of the Governor's Emergency Executive Order, which relaxed public meeting participation requirements for being in person. And by virtue of that order, Mr. Germain will be allowed not only to participate, but also to vote. At the podium, you will be hearing from him in a moment, is one of our members of our esteemed State Legislative Contingent, Representative Sean Dooley. We're very happy to have him tonight. My immediate right is Mr. Michael Gazinski, a very busy person of late. And to his right is Maureen Keneese, who has been holding down the fort. We know that we probably have a fairly substantial audience this evening, and we are here to meet, to acknowledge that we live in some extraordinary times. No aspect of our family life, for young and for old, and also for business and employers, are unaffected.
Can you just announce that the volume's not working for people at home?
Oh.
Nobody's hearing you.
Nobody's hearing us. Apparently, the volume is not working at home. So hopefully, Milis Community Media is aware of that and is communicating with Verizon or Comcast to address that.
I'm here, you fine.
Yes, but you're on the computer, my friend.
I know that.
He's missing a click here. Can you have a TV in there so you can try it? No?
I don't have it here. I'll go downstairs and check. I'll be right back.
It's fine, it's fine.
No, he's gone.
We have Jim's on, Jim's on the case. How are we doing here? Do we know yet?
Oh, he's back.
That's all right.
All right. Oh, I'm told we can be heard. All right.
We can be heard.
There we go. All right, we don't want to do the reverb, though, but thank you. All right, let's start this again. We apologize, we've had a couple of unexpected technical difficulties. It sounds like our sound is back. I have introduced key members of the people seated before you, as well as our State Representative, Sean Dooley, from whom you're going to hear in a moment. Tonight, we're meeting to acknowledge the extraordinary times in which we all live. No aspect of our family lives, for young and old, businesses and employers are unaffected. This meeting will principally be to address the changes that have been instituted throughout Milis, to include Town Hall today, to provide everyone with greater control over our interactions with one another. They will not be without inconvenience, and none are being put into place without considerable forethought and planning. We greatly appreciate everyone's understanding and cooperation. We will ask now and at the end of our meeting to remind everyone to look after thy neighbor as thyself, to practice the golden rule, to be smart, to not question authorities when they ask you to conduct your daily routine in a way that is different. Because this is what we all have to do to keep ourselves, our families, our friends, our neighbors, and our town safe. I invited the members of our Legislative Contingent to bring us up to date on the many activities that are happening at the state level, which will precipitate a conversation among this board with respect to potentially pushing out our town meeting date, as well as our prior-to-then local elections. So I'm going to ask for Representative Sean Dooley, thank you so much for coming, and any updates that you have would be great.
Thank you for having me here. Everything's very fluid, as you are aware. At this current time, we're trying to figure everything out. From a town meeting, I believe your charter allows for you to move your town meeting with selectmen and moderator coordination. So I think we're fine on that, so we don't have to necessarily worry about that. The town election is a little more difficult, from the standpoint of, basically, right now we have currently, you know, two options. We have the go-to-court-and-ask-for-an-emergency injunction. Wellesley did that earlier today and got relief for their election. So that is one avenue. I would feel free to go ahead with that, but we're having a meeting tomorrow, I think, at 2:00, teleconference, and we're going to discuss different options. And I believe that the state will, you know, every legislator I've spoken to wants to be able to, you know, create emergency powers to allow you to postpone your actual town election. So I believe that will be forthcoming soon. And I know also that, at the same time, the Secretary of State is asking for emergency powers, so he can also postpone both local and state elections, because we have not, fortunately not in our area, but around the state, we have four different special elections coming up at the end of the month. So we have to determine, we have two senatorial and two representative special elections on the 31st. So we're trying to figure out what to do with those as well. Besides that, I mean, we're working, you know, fast and furious. The Governor's, as you know, has done a lot of the executive orders, gave relief from the open meeting law, the ability to have the telecommunication aspect. And so I just wanted to be here more, more to hear from your chief and Board of Health, and you guys, see if there's anything that you need me to do and bring back to the Legislative Delegation, and up to the State House, and see if there's anything that I'm missing. I know I've been in contact with, with all of you, so it's been great. So if there's, but if there's anything else that we're able to get, you know, garner out of tonight, I'm happy to, you know, do whatever we can, but it's, it's crazy. And there's, I guess the one thing I would caution people at home is there is a lot of rumors out there. I spend more of my time addressing rumors that are being out there, that the federal government's shutting down this, or the state government's shutting down that. You know, just remember, there are just rumors. There's, there's a lot of panic going on, you know, you know, stay fast, hold the course. We're trying not to shut down things that we don't need to. We're trying to be cautious. We're trying to make sure things are moving forward in a logical manner, and we're trying to make sure, also make sure nothing's done too dramatically or too drastically. You know, that being said, as things, you know, ramp up, you know, noon on Saturday, we were, had no plans on closing down restaurants. And then, you know, Sunday evening, that, that changed, as the, a lot of people were basically flooding a lot of the restaurants in the city of Boston, and there, there was seven instances of community spread. So decided that needed to make that next step. So we're doing it very, very cautiously. We don't want to hurt small businesses. The economy is very, very important, as well as the health, so we're trying to balance the two. So happy to help, anything I can answer, any questions, I might not know the answer. But thank you, guys, for working so hard in, you know, for public safety, you know, doing the yeoman's share of a lot of this. So anything I can do to help, I'm happy to.
Well, that's great. I'm actually going to take advantage of the time that you're here and open it up to my colleagues to see if there's something.
Welcome.
Two people at home, two different people who don't have sound.
You know what? They have to talk to Verizon, and I'm really sorry if you have sound.
I wanted to get that.
Yeah, okay.
People who are not able to.
All right, I don't know what to say about that. We have no technical control here, so, but thank you, just to the folks, I think you have to call Comcast or Verizon, because they are the licensing authorities.
Well, it depends on, yeah, you can, you can either, it depends on who your cable provider is.
Right.
Because both of them are out there, so.
Right.
You call Verizon, and your cable provider is Xfinity, you're not going to get much relief.
That's true.
Getting back to the election, this is my, what I would like to see, of course, is enabling legislation to allow the town, the local town, to make its judgment with respect to election. Because certainly, an election on May 4th is a lot different than an election on March 15th. So I'd like to be able to have the flexibility to do that, with plenty of notice, obviously, to people. But who knows? Delaying an election, to me, has a different sense to it than delaying a town meeting. I don't know why. I mean, it's, it's like we're, as elected officials, changing the term of office, and that just may be necessary. So what I'd like to do is have that flexibility. But in addition to that, I think that, and the town clerk can maybe address some of this, we have either no or limited ability to do early voting on a town election. We can do absentee. In other words, we can mitigate the need of people to come to the polls by coming one by one. But early voting, as I understand it, is not permitted for a town election. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So.
With UST voting in the office.
But if we've got legislative authority to do it, then we can make the decision.
Well, I mean.
I think that the town clerks.
But if you don't have voting, then you've got to get a whole set available.
I know, but I just want the authority to do it.
Just do absentee voting in home ass, if you don't come.
Yeah, I mean, absentee and early voting are virtually identical.
I know they are.
And, you know, and the only difference is, especially given the way our Constitution is written on absentee, there really isn't a worry for it, but there is a huge cost, not only to the clerk's office, from a staffing standpoint, but also from the way the ballots are run through, you know, running the papers, and also having a full set of other ballots. So I think, I, you know, I'm happy to pass that along.
But just having the authority to do it doesn't mean we have to do it. I mean, I guess that's all I'm asking.
Right.
And frankly, it's just a way of trying to get a way to encourage participation in voting, whether it's in May or June. I mean, we've got to make it easy for people to vote.
Right.
So, give us the authority to make the decision, and let us have as much leeway as we can get, that's what I would ask.
Right. And the other, you know, like I said, and the other way you can go is you can take it to, you know, go to Superior Court and ask for an emergency injunction, which is what Wellesley did, and they got, they were given, and I'm 99% sure, they were given leeway to hold their town election prior to June 30th. And so they have the flexibility in there. Obviously, they'll set their town meeting date based on when they set their town election date, you know, a week, or two, or three, whatever, after that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I think the point also, though, is with respect to election workers and just the environment, is to be consistent if we're clearing out restaurants in their entirety. And we've heard any range of recommendations of numbers of people congregating in one space at one time. Just the physical nature of the typical election process is such that it would be in total conflict with what these guidelines are increasingly becoming, so.
Oh, no, no, I was going to say, I don't think there's any question, and that's the reason I don't necessarily, not to dissuade you from going to use the court auction, I think it might be a waste of your time, because I'm, I'm very, very confident that we're going to move forward.
Yeah.
For that very reason, there's a lot of people that are having elections end of March, beginning of April.
Yeah.
Just the nature of, you know, Madam Clerk running an election, where you have voting booths, where you're, you know, and the same pens, and people, you know, being, you know, breathing on the, on the poll workers, it's, it's a very, you know, tough situation, even in, even if you have someone literally wiping down and wearing masks. I mean, it's, it's very untenable.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're down to, from the governor, anyway, 25 people in a room. There's always going to be more than 25 people.
Yeah, yeah, once, once you figure in the poll workers, you get one voter at a time.
Yeah, so.
Right.
So, all right.
So the town should hear out of this conversation that this is a conversation that we will continue to have.
Yep.
But our inclination is to seek relief in both areas, so that we, we can roll with this wave of new social interaction and containment strategies, and have maximum participation in both our town meeting and our election, hopefully with some flexibility in terms of timing.
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments?
No.
Any other financial relief?
Oh, yeah, financial relief would be good.
Looking at my town administrator.
I mean, financial relief is, obviously, is, you know, we have that in the package. We passed the $15 million that's going to be coming back to cities and towns next week. We passed it last week, it's coming into the future. So definitely track the, everything that's being done at Board of Health. I sent Mike over a tracker yesterday for the federal government, now that we've, Trump has allowed that for, you know, it's a national disaster, so he's allowed the disaster relief. So we want to make sure that the town tracks every single thing. So I sent over a tracker yesterday, so make sure we're, you know, putting every little thing down that we can now, so you're not having to recreate it.
Smart.
Two, three, four months, you know, after the fact. And so I think that'll be helpful as well. And as this progresses, obviously, we're going to, from a legislative standpoint, we're going to make sure that we allow additional funds being, you know, released. Governor Baker passed an emergency motion to legislators, legislative bodies supported it, and so much of having emergency declaration from a unemployment standpoint, there's no longer a one-week wait if you're on, if it's, if your business was shut down, or you were laid off due to the coronavirus outbreak. So those, those sort of things were, and you can start collecting from day one. So things like that are, you know, one of the things that we're really trying to put forth quickly. The schools are doing the different funding, you know, we're, you know, funding, and hopefully we'll get relief from the feds. Right now, we only have relief from the feds for school funding if you have over 50% free or reduced lunch. So, you know, we're obviously not in one of those communities here, but we're hoping that we'll be able to tack that on to some of the other initiatives. And if not, I'm quite confident that the state's going to step up on that aspect as well. There's been some Medicaid relief already, as far as, you know, releasing some of those monies on the federal level. And like I said, it's very, very fluid. So we're really trying to figure out, you know, how it's going to affect everybody. Every single business is different, and there's a lot, going to be a lot of trickle-up and trickle-down cost components to these different shutdowns. And I think it's, you know, it's scary, it's frightening. I think it's, you know, it's going to be very, very frightening to the residents because of the uncertainty and the unknown length that this is going to take place. Hopefully, the three weeks is, you know, flattens the curve, and we're, we're in a good place to start moving forward after that standpoint. But I think that's one of, going to be one of the hardest things for you guys, is a, you know, counseling people and dealing with people who are in various, you know, states of distress, based on their own personal financial circumstances. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some additional relief from a tax reporting standpoint, both on the state and the federal standpoint, as well as, you know, financial reporting for the towns, and able to get some of the money out to you quicker. I know we're, I don't know if it ended up getting approved yet today or not. I know we're putting forth, we're, we have a provision based on town meeting, that the budget can carry forward on a month-by-month basis going forward. So if there is some sort of protracted, you know, emergency, stay in place, and we can't have the town meeting in time, we at least not, aren't panicked that July 1 comes, and what do you do? And as well as any emergency funding and emergency costs associated are able to be carried forward for a three-year period, as opposed to being settled in the one-year budget cycle.
I have a question, I'm wondering, and I'll get right to you, Chief. I have a question that I know people are talking about. In neighboring Rhode Island, Governor Gina Raimondo changed their April School Vacation Week and indicated that this, this first week of being off is, in fact, the school vacation week. And parents are starting to wonder if that's something that you could see on the horizon that the governor might do, is take the traditional April School Vacation Week, or for some, maybe private schools, March, and forward, push it forward, and then say that it doesn't exist if we're just getting back into school at that time.
Right. Well, obviously, private schools can do whatever they want.
Right.
I honestly don't know, from the standpoint of, you know, I had a conference call with Desi four days ago, and that wasn't brought up whatsoever. You know, the main focus was the 185-day drop-dead date. So whatever scheduled date of, end of school was at the beginning of the year, when, when they set the calendar, you add five days on to that, and that's the, going to be the maximum last day of school, regardless, you know, if we're out for five days, 20 days, you know, the rest of the school year, that, that's going to be the guaranteed stop anyways. I think that we will take into account, you know, different people's plans and vacations, but I honestly don't know. I don't think that anyone's really gotten there so far. You know, everyone's really, really working on ramping up online education, getting things out to students, make sure that students are properly fed, and, and, you know, and then we have the whole daycare situation with parents that are both working. So there's so many other things that are more pressing, I think, you know, not that that's not important, but I haven't heard any discussion. That being said, when they announce it tomorrow morning, you know, I haven't, I haven't been clued in as of yet. Oh, we have more technical difficulties?
No, we have, we're trying to avoid them. It's close.
Now, Mike has to jump over it.
Good.
Nobody move.
I, I'm sorry for the non-answer, but.
No, no, no.
As of yet, we haven't, I haven't heard anything. You know, it somewhat makes sense, but I also, I also see the argument against it as well.
I, I think the residents are really grateful that you're here. Where would you advise residents, besides our Milistown website, where would you advise residents to find out about states that are happening operationally with, with the state? Where did you, where would you advise them to go?
What, what do you mean?
Beyond, like, beyond, say, the CDC or a Department of Public Health, but in terms of policy.
I mean, I mean, DPH has been probably the best website that I've seen so far. I like it better than the CDC website. It's, it's, you know, much more intuitive, it's clearer language, and it's obviously all more focused on us. The Governor's Office has been putting out their things through there. We have a whole, Secretary Mary Lou Sutter's has taken over the whole coronavirus, so that's, they're basically taking over the DPH website, so pretty much all communications going through there. I don't know if Desi, I presume they have some memorandos on their website, but I honestly haven't been spending much time there. DPH is by far the best, you know, and, you know, and your local town website. It's, it's good, and it just be careful with the rumor mill. I mean, there's, I heard, you know, I had, you know, five panic calls from very, very, you know, you know, respected members of the community who had their inside scoop from their friend in Washington, DC, that everything was getting shut down at, you know, 3:00 this afternoon, and, and I'm like, I called up, you know, Governor Baker, and he's like, he's like, Sean, I don't know what to tell you. If, if it is, no one's told me. So it's, it's, you know, so there's a lot of rumors just flying around, and I think it's all well-intentioned, and people hear a little things, or they hear, well, this is a possibility that could happen, and they automatically jump to the assumption, or they hear that something happened in Rhode Island or in Pennsylvania, and they, you know, automatically take it to the next logical step of, well, if it's happening there, it's going to be happening everywhere. And, you know, that may be the case, but, you know, thus, thus far, I've spent more of my time diffusing rumors and, you know, false statements, as I'm sure this chief has, than, than anything else. I mean, that's, that's been a, almost a full-time job of people saying, oh, this is what I'm hearing, this is what's going to happen to my kid, you know, this is what's going on. And it's, and it's, it's unknown, it's panic, it's worry. I understand that you're hearing all these things, there's so much information out there, it's a little bit, you know, information overload. I try to put out, you know, a summary, you know, on my personal Facebook page every day of, you know, this is what I know is to be, to be true, and, and as succinct as, as I possibly can, and, you know, answer any questions anyone has. So if anyone has a particular question, you know, feel free to email me at my State House address, or find me on Facebook or anything like that. And if I don't know the answer, I can try to find it out.
Excellent. I think the chief had a question or comment.
I do. I was just wondering, and maybe you've said it and I missed it, what, for our residents whose primary employment are the restaurant and bars, is there an avenue for them to get some help?
As far as the actual employees, they're going to be able to do the immediate unemployment. So, you know, so that, for the owners of the restaurants, that's one of the things we're still working on. Small Business Association has created a $70,000 loan program. The state has a matching loan program. I think this, SBA's 3%, I think the state's trying to do something as a zero interest. You know, I was, you know, some of the things that I know myself and some of our colleagues have proposed is, you know, a delay in some of the, the meals, taxes, and things along those lines, to make sure that they stay as liquid as possible. And, you know, let's, let's wait a month or two on things like that. That hasn't come to pass yet, but, you know, I think we're looking at every single option available. The ability to do the delivery and the, and the takeout was an attempt to at least keep, you know, some of the, you know, some of, some of the staff employed and the, and the owners, and at least keep all the food that's in the walk-in from going to waste, so then they at least don't have that cost and expense. I know it was, it was, it was very tough, tough on the governor. He really did not want to shut down our restaurants for that very reason, that it affects so many people on so many different avenues. So that's, you know, that's one of the things. And the other thing I would encourage, you know, residents, I have residents all the time, you know, what can we do to help? I'm like, you know, the, you know, the food pantries need help, but also the small, small businesses, if you can buy, if you can do the takeout or buy a gift card, that'll really help during the next month to be able to keep them up and going. If you have a favorite restaurant that you, you know you're going to end up spending it eventually, you know, go in and spend, you know, a couple hundred dollars in gift cards to help them through this tough time.
And I know that hand-in-hand with that is remembering to tip on takeout, which is not what you do intuitively, but hourly, front, at front-of-the-house hosts, hostesses, servers, either tip out the kitchen help in addition to expecting that money to pay their bills. So just the, it's just the business model of being in the service industry-specific restaurants. So if people could be generous and tip on a takeout order, that would be really helpful as well.
Okay.
I, I'm just really grateful that you came. I don't know if my colleague Pete has any questions to ask from his per.
No, I'm very pleased that he did take the time to come. I think it helps to give everyone a sense that our legislators are doing everything they can to assist us this time. So thank you very much, Representative Dooley. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete.
So feel comfortable and rest up here, if you would like to stay at the required social distance.
I was going to say, I'll keep my six feet. I have, I have to go visit another, I have to go to, run over to Rentham next, but.
Okay.
But I'll stay for a little while, and then.
Thank you for coming.
Then, and, and anything comes out tonight, any other questions, I mean.
Yep.
I know Loring's very shy, she's reluctant to reach out and, and ask anybody any questions, so I'm, I'm sure we'll, I'll be hearing anything, if there's anything else I need.
Thank you.
Matt, Chair, and I'd just like to echo the comments of my colleagues. It's really important for the citizens of this town to realize that the state representative is not calling us from his office in Boston, he's here tonight, and we appreciate your coming here, because it's always better to hear from you directly, and you can hear from us directly. So thank you very much for, for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to follow up now. On our agenda, we have seated before us leadership of the town on the town's complete and holistic response to changing how we behave and conduct business in the era of the coronavirus or COVID-19. And you will recognize the two experts. One is not wearing a uniform, that is, he is John McVeigh, he is our Director of Board of Health. He is amply credentialed as if he did have a uniform, and he has not been sleeping of late, because he's been doing yeoman's work. You don't see off to the side, because Kathleen Lannan is doing her social distancing, but Kathleen is also in the front lines. She's a registered nurse, and she is a very important and integral member of our Board of Health. And, and then, the man with the brass is, of course, Chief Rick Barrett, who also is the Chairman of the Milis Emergency Planning Agency, which has been in overdrive of late. So we really know that the community tuned in tonight, really wants to hear from you as to how things are dynamically changing. I, I want to, on behalf of our board, acknowledge all the hard work that you have done, are doing, and will be continuing to do as the changing tides roll out. And we did put in place a public email address for questions, so if any roll in after tonight's meeting, we will make sure to get them through you to the respective subject experts. So we're going to turn the floor over to you to tell the community what they need to know as of today, Monday, March 16.
Okay, thanks, and good evening. John McVeigh with the Board of Health, Milis. Just to go over some statistics that have just come in, just so we're aware of them. In Massachusetts, there are a total of confirmed 45 cases, presumptive positive 119, and a total, brings a total of 164. Excuse me. Norfolk County has 31 confirmed and presumptive cases. The US has a total of approximately 4,000 cases, with unfortunately 69 deaths.
John, just to interrupt for a second, so people understand, you know the difference between confirmed and reported. Can you just explain to folks what that means?
Well, confirmed is that it went through the CDC, was validated through the CDC.
Right. But the other ones are.
Presumptive, presumptive, they haven't gone through the CDC testing, but have gone through the state lab.
But have they been tested by the Commonwealth?
But I think if anyone watched TV tonight, they finally let go of presumptive. All the stations. All the stations, they confirmed that the theory early on in the disease, every lab that did testing had to be assessed by the CDC. They had to send back X amount of tests. If they would match the CDC's results, they would no longer, you know, they'd be allowed not to be called down.
Right, okay.
That's, I, I believe that's been let go of.
But that number is, there is scientific evidence that those 190 people have the virus.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
There's not a gap there at this point. I appreciate that. Now we know either through the CDC testing or testing at the state lab or whatever approved lab there is, these are the cases that we know of. Based on testing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the state's done a file, by a thousand tests. Just to give you an idea of
Okay.
The ratio of positives.
Well, I'd also like to again thank the chief and Kathy and all the people that worked very hard, especially at the last LEPC meeting. They went over all the difficult issues. Everything is, seems to be changing by the day. And the different policies that have to be generated to, you know, combat this, this virus that seems to be circulating. You know, obviously there's a big disruption socially. We've got the school system that had to close down. And then the governor's orders just yesterday that enhanced school closings. Restaurant and bars, we know that assembly is disruptive and economically going to be a problem as we, if hopefully it's only, you know, a few weeks, but if it goes further than that, we, we could see significant economic issues involved with that. I would like to say that we've got a lot of people working on tonight. I think maybe we'll, we've talked about this before with the Council on Aging and if, it's safe to say, you know, hours of operation for the town hall and so forth. The, the big group that seems to be very vulnerable in this situation is the, is the elderly, people with pre-existing health conditions. So that group is the one we need to focus on in keeping them safe and making sure that they're not exposed to COVID. And I think that if that's, you know, done, we, we've, we've done quite a big job as far as keeping the surge down, which I think they're very concerned with at hospitals and things of that nature. Trying to keep that, that curve down and maybe pushed out longer so there's more time to deal with the potential spike in the surge like they saw in Italy and some other places in the world.
Chief?
So as Emergency Management Director.
Can you see, I, I know you can't reach, I don't know if you want to share that over the microphone.
We held our first meeting of the Local Emergency Planning Committee on Friday. It was very well attended. Some great discussions were had. A lot of decisions were made for the safety of the residents of Millis. You know, the schools being closed. And then the discussion of potential with town hall, library, fields, gym, all those decisions were made. On a daily basis since Friday, as the representatives say, this is a fluid situation. We're, we're getting emails in the morning that are changed by the afternoon, which requires, requires us to change policies or how we will, you know, deal with the virus. But as a community, I think we've worked pretty well, everybody together. I know there's been a big push for providing meals for the seniors. The school has done a great job of making sure that the children that need lunches are able to get them at a pickup. And again, I think we're, we're taking the right steps with the town to make sure that we have protected its employees and the residents as a whole. The representative again said, you know, follow the DPH. They seem to be the, their website seems to be the easiest to read and follow. They have good information. CDC is a great website. Unfortunately, it's, it's confusing to, to go through and you kind of get twisted up in circles after going through too much. But the Department of Public Health has a great website that can give you plenty of information. As far as a public safety standpoint, your police and fire departments are prepared for any response that it requires. We have the proper equipment to protect our employees and at the same time give you the care that's needed. We do ask that residents that have flu-like symptoms and want to call 911 that they are, you know, they give that information to the dispatcher. It's important that we get as much information as possible so that our members can prepare for it and we can also prepare the hospitals for our arrival. We have things in place with the hospitals to prevent the spread and it continues to grow daily on our responses to these, you know, types of calls. We'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Well, I just wanted to say first of all to the town that what the chief and Mr. McVeigh did not indicate is that they are in touch with the CDC and the Department, Massachusetts State Department of Public Health on a very regular basis. And as policies have to change, they will be posted on the town website and they also will be indicated in the outbound messages of various town departments. What's going to have to happen, and our town administrator is here to speak to it. We have our town clerk in the office. In the audience, we have our Director of the DPW and the Director of the Building Commission and our Finance Director, who are all here because what they want you to know is that while they're going to continue to run town operations, they're going to have to do so in a different way in terms of how you're going to access their services. And again, we want to acknowledge that it's very fluid. We heard from today, for example, from the police chief, that they are suspending some of their, what they would call kind of optional activities with respect to community interactions. They are unable to schedule the very popular and really awe-inspiring leadership camp because everything is so fluid. So we are pushing out activities. We have some recreational activities that right now will probably be put on, I mean, into suspended animation simply because we have to do what's best for the town from this, from the public health standpoint. And I think with that, I'm going to ask our town administrator to comment on some of the more recent changes that are going to happen that the town will experience if they need some services from town hall or from the public safety or library.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the fire chief mentioned, the LEPC did meet last Friday and we had a great discussion. There were, I think, some good decisions made as far as actions to be taken. But since then, again, as the chief has outlined, there's been a lot of development day by day in regards to the coronavirus. And based on the declarations of the governor over the weekend, the chief, the fire chief, the police chief, the health director and I met earlier today. And we do have a number of recommendations for the board moving forward as far as town operations. We are recommending that effective Tuesday, March 17th, and until further notice, that all town offices be closed to the public with those, with services provided by telephone, email and online payment systems. And that people may see town employees by appointment only when an in-person meeting is required. The town hall staff will continue to work in their offices unless any of those individuals are in a vulnerable population or are required to care for someone in that vulnerable group. And those individuals will be asked to work from home to the extent practical. Touching a little bit upon the inspectional services, I have talked to the building commissioner in regards to this. And based on our discussions, he feels that inspectional services can continue for new construction and for exterior inspections and, but however, interior inspections of occupied dwellings would have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and would be determined at the judgment of the inspector whether it's appropriate to go inside and do those inspections. So I don't know if the, if the building commissioner has any other comments on that or
That's accurate.
Okay.
So can I just interrupt for a second on that one? So based upon the fact that I think most of you folks who are in your positions are getting some input from state resources as well, on the inspectional services, is that pretty much consistent what we're seeing in other towns? And under what conditions might you change that position? Just obviously to protect the, the inspectors as well as the, the folks who are having their places inspected?
Right, well, as the day progresses.
Yeah, spread apart. There you go.
All right. How's that? In conversations with some of the other cities and towns today, that there are some towns that have suspended all their inspections.
Okay.
Who, how's that? All right. So there are some towns, cities and towns that have suspended their inspections, services. Some cities and towns have suspended taking billing permits, wiring permits, electrical, plumbing and gas permits, so. And there are some towns that are allowing inspectors to do what I've implemented today to have it upon their own judgment and when they're going to go into somebody's house or not. And that's based upon the conditions of, you know, what they, if they're sick, we ask them if they're sick or not. Obviously, you don't have to go in there if they don't feel as though they want to. And I did speak with the plumbing inspector and the other wire inspector today and the building inspector, my assistant Gary, who's from Medfield. Medfielders also have that approach. They're doing the same thing. They're doing inspections just on construction and then based upon each inspector, how they go to someone's home, they'll decide whether they'll do the inspections or not. But some, some cities and towns have taken that one step further and, and pretty much closed shop, which until I get something from the state to say that you should close shop, I think we should keep things moving a little bit as we can. Now, the BBRS has scheduled an emergency meeting on Wednesday to have some discussions on accepting photos and some other, like Skype, whatever it is that you can do to go through the internet to look at and to view inspections. So they're, they're going to bring that up on Wednesday. They're also going to bring up whether they would advise cities and towns to close for the next three weeks, you know, their billing departments and just suspend all construction. So, you know, play it day by day. For now, I posted a bulletin up in the front door. So when everybody comes to the front door that they can call the office and leave their, their plans or their application out front, we're trying to get some sort of box to leave it in. And a call from inspection, we'll send it out to the inspections so we can keep the ball rolling somewhat. But for the time being, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll wait, really wait till Wednesday what the BBRS has to say.
I just, Madam Chair, and this has been going on so far that we have seen our department heads take the initiative, town administrator, chiefs, building commissioner and others. And obviously, being a board that meets only two, every two weeks, even with an emergency, it takes us two days to have it. I want to make sure that you receive the message from us that, you know, you've got the responsibility and the authority to do what you need to do. And if we have to ratify it after the fact, I think we're certainly in a position that we have confidence that our, our department leaders will make the right judgment, that will get input not only from each other, but from the state and other resources that they can rely upon so that the citizens know that we're not frozen in place just because the board can't meet. So anyway.
The fire department inspections are following suit. We're, new construction will still inspect and home inspections will be done on a, a basis where we sort of have a discussion with the homeowner and if it meets the criteria, we would do it. We're just trying not to hold up home sales and, you know, occupancy permits at the building department as well.
I'd like to also ditto the fire department with that as far as the health department. We go out, we do inspections on onsite septic systems and we may have housing inspections and it'll be a case-by-case basis.
Okay, yep. At least typically, it's not a group of 10 or 20 people out there, but on the other hand, it's out in the field. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I mean, I would like to offer the DPW director the same opportunity to talk to us about what his team is up to. Most of the work's outside, but I mean, meters and whatnot, we need to make sure that those folks are also being cautious. And I do appreciate that the message that we're getting from our, our town department is that we're trying to keep as much going as we can without jeopardizing anybody's health or safety.
So most importantly, we have plans to continue keeping the transfer station open on Wednesdays and Saturdays. It's an outside function, so we don't see that being, but we will follow exactly the same protocol for inside meter readings. Most of the meter readings on a final sale, we can get from the outside reading device. But we can get it, but then they're still going to have to come here to close out the sale. And I think that's probably the same with, you know, most of the procedures. So that's something that's going to have to be worked out here. We also have a conference call for the COVID-19 with the Mass DEP. We have a conference call tomorrow at three o'clock that's going to give us better direction on chemicals and so on and so on. So that's tomorrow between, I think, 2:00 and 3:30. And I, all the water operators will, you know, I've asked them to make sure they, you know, call in with me on that. The same, we will, we'll go with the direction as the town administrator stated, that we expect everybody to come to work, but if there's reasons why they can't, family matters. But we came up, we actually met today and we came up with a, a plan if it gets, you know, to another stage where people are asked to stay home. I mean, we still have to have people come in on a daily basis to check the wells in the sewer stations. So we do have a plan in place if it gets to the next step. Most importantly, the transfer station will be open through all this. So there's no, I can't see really any reason why. And funerals, I mean, you know, I'm sure we'll get direction on how people are going to get buried, but, but we still will bury people.
On that note, I just want to compliment the team, both the cemetery committee and your team for the beautiful work that has been done up in the cemetery that creates new land for that purpose and straightens out some problematic roads. And so, well done.
Thank you.
Nice job. I just wanted to let you know from the state representative that he wanted everybody to know who, a small business owner, that Governor Baker announced a $75,000 loan for small businesses under 50 employees with no payments required for six months if you can show that your business was adversely affected by
We all got that.
Okay.
When we all look at your phones, you'll see that we all
Sorry.
I think the town administrator got it too. So we'll be able to post that. No, that's good news, but absolutely.
Just one more thing, Madam Chair. Also, our recommendation includes that no board or committee meetings should be held in any town building for the remainder of this week. I am going to be working with our acting IT director on a remote participation platform that hopefully will be in operation by next Monday. And once that's up and running, I'll be reaching out to the chairs of the boards and committees on the process for them to be able to run meetings on a remote basis so that, we'll work out the details, but so that they'd be able to come in here or if possible, they could do it at home to set up a meeting. There would just be mechanisms we would have to look at to make sure that the, the public would have some access to that even through an audio program online or, or some way to have access to it. So that is part of the recommendation in order to keep the numbers of people in any one place to a minimum.
Well, this is an operational decision. I don't know if, do, do we need to vote on this really? This is really an operational emergency response by the
Well, I mean, we, I, we can vote to support what we've heard. I mean, I think that at this stage of the game, we are pretty much in agreement that this is where, the direction we want to go. I just want to make sure on the remote meeting, because I have a question that I received today, and it relates to any board which has in fact a formal posted hearing, which is different from a meeting. And this would apply to the planning board. It could apply to the Board of Health looking for a, it could apply to this board for permits and whatnot. And the guidance that we received from town council indicated that there might be the need to enhance the capability so that there could be a true, true dialogue and a true hearing. Kate, maybe you could
So on our phone, hang on, hang on. So on our phone right now is town council attorney Kate Federoff from Mead Tallerman in Costa.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the confession today to let me participate by phone. But in any event, yes. So technically, under the governor's order, you can maintain to have public hearings, but it is a little bit but it is a little bit more complicated than a public meeting. And for the folks at home who may not know the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting, this is where you have an applicant, typically, planning board, conservation commission, zoning board. They have an application before the board and the board serves in a quasi-judicial fashion. What the order provides is that while you can have those hearings, it's a little less flexible because the public not only needs to be able to hear what's going on at the meeting, so here we're televising our meeting, so we're in compliance with that order, but also needs to have the ability to participate, as does the applicant, obviously, who would do the presentation. So, it's a little bit more complicated and it depends upon your technological capabilities. If you can have that kind of two-way conferencing. So, some folks have talked about using WebEx or some of those other web-based products where you can follow along and pose questions virtually. But others have said, you know, it's better to, it's the easier way is to try to get extensions from the applicant because as you may know, there are certain deadlines inherent in the law that you have to take action by a certain number of days, depending upon what decision you're making. So, you're, you're up against a wall if your application has been filed. But I would take a hazard to guess that most applicants would understand that this is, you know, an emergency and unusual situation and would grant those kinds of extensions.
Well, I, again, I think that that's good advice and we need to get our other board chairs, make them aware of it. I would ask the town council to do a direct outreach to the chair of the planning board because the planning board certainly has things on its agenda, it has notice requirements, it has to meet, it has a butters, it has to have to notify. So if we could have maybe one-on-one conversation with the chair and clarify what's possible over the next four or five weeks, I think that would be a good idea.
And the zoning board as well.
And the ZBA, right.
Yeah, and, you know, I can coordinate with the town administrator to kind of do a group.
Right.
You know, chat with, with all of the board chairs, if you would like.
Well, there's two levels to be dealt with. One level is can the board, a committee, hold a meeting without anybody being in the room? The answer is yes, if the technology will support it. And there's less of a concern there about the back and, the give and take, because it's, you can hold a meeting, which is informational only. But at these hearings, you need to, as the council indicated, you need to have the ability for applicants and the butters to engage in the dialogue, so. That makes it a little bit different.
This is a little bit of necessity being the mother of invention, because I don't think there's a, a business sector right now that is have, is immune from having to reinvent itself. And I can speak specifically to education, specifically higher education, where we probably all know somebody who has now departed college or university not of their choosing and the faculty who have planned curricula to deliver in person are now on the fly. It's building an airplane while it's in flight. So, everybody's working very hard to adapt to a new way of working. In truth, industry uses tools like Zoom, WebEx, join.me all the time. So I think this maybe will end up, at the end of the day, expanding public participation in their, in government process simply because people know they have an option to participate if, for whatever reason, a commute isn't working out. I mean, it's always preferable to be attending a meeting in person, but if the tech, if the time doesn't allow or the conditions aren't right, as is the case now. One question I had, and I, it's probably for the town administrator, but maybe the right person is not in the room, and that is specific to the Clyde Brown completion contracts. We all heard that Agostini Bacon wraps up their work, I think, by a date, which one assumes is predicated on the work being done. And I just, I guess I wanna make sure that we are communicating appropriately to make sure that we aren't necessarily wrapping a contract on the basis of what the calendar says, but on the basis of what has been completed within the contract, simply because we're all working differently. Their access to that building is probably different. So I don't know any of the answers, but I just wanna raise it as a possibility that perhaps their time in service is going to go over that date, shouldn't have a change order to that effect. But I don't know enough about the contract off the top of my head to know.
Well, that's, I agree, that's certainly something that the, the elementary school building committee needs to look at in conjunction, perhaps with our inspection department, to see what factors are, you know, as far as what's going on currently is impacting their progress on wrapping up construction, but that's something that we'll be looking into.
Are there any other comments? There are people in the audience who are heads of departments. Are there any other comments or questions, assurances that you want to provide for the community? Because what I want to do is acknowledge that this is probably the most important agenda item of the year right now, but we do have a couple of other items of business that we want to move on to, but I don't want to rush in any way. I want to make sure everybody has had something to say to the town. Yes, ma'am, could you come to the micro, is there a way to do that?
I just wanted to thank all the Millis residents that have been self-quarantining. They've done a wonderful job, they've been cooperative, and just thank them for their concern for others in the, in the community. Nobody planned to get this virus. And I, in the, in the next couple of weeks, we've all heard about the testing being ramped up. What we're doing now is trying to slow the curve. And I want everyone to understand that as the testing ramps up, the numbers are gonna skyrocket. That doesn't mean that what we're doing now to flatten the curve, as everyone was saying, isn't working. I mean, those two things may seem to be counterintuitive, but we need to expect those numbers to go up. They will, just because 80-plus percent of the people that have this disease have a very mild case, haven't been tested to, you know, in the current schemata because of the limitation of testing. When the testing ramps up, they will. So those numbers will, will go up. And we expect, you know, as the, the nursing part of the Board of Health, that we will be very busy once that testing ramps up, because we will be responsible for tracking people, you know, making sure they maintain self-quarantine. Fortunately, we had 100 hours of, from the tax write-off program, we have a nurse, so the timing on that is perfect. For the short term, we're able to manage what we need to manage. We expect probably within three weeks, a month from now, that we might need to look to some other things to get the job done. But I can't thank everyone that's done a great job doing the right thing. It, it will help, it has helped, even the people who might have self-quarantined for the flu. The flu is still pretty prevalent and their quarantining themselves has helped decrease the spread of that to decrease the burden on the hospitals.
Right, thank you.
Madam Chair, I guess that I would also like to suggest that, you know, we're doing this update, it's because the board is here tonight to have a meeting. We might wanna consider some televised update, say Friday, that the Board of Health, somebody from this board and the chief, maybe do a televised update, work with Millis Community Cable to, you know, broadcast. I mean, in addition to whatever we can do in terms of technology. But I do think that there's no reason that we can't give updates to the public just because this board is not meeting.
Right.
That's a great point.
And we have a meeting planned for this Friday. If something changes before then, we'll know.
Emergency Planning Committee is meeting again on Friday. And it might be helpful to have an update either Friday or Monday, depending on. Well, I mean, even if it's steady as you go, right?
I will say that I had a conversation, and I'm gonna answer a question that I have heard a lot directly, which is, there is an acknowledgement that when you close the school, you don't do so in isolation. There was a reverberation when the original decision was made to do so for a week. And if you had been a participant in the Emergency Planning Committee, Emergency Planning Management Agency meeting, what you would understand is that the school is but a microcosm of our society, that there are kids in our school system and there are everywhere across state for whom that is their source of nutritional meals. That when you make decisions about the operational access to this building, the town hall, it affects people of all ages. When you have kids who are now at home and you have people that are telecommuting, there is concern about what are the kids gonna do for the day? Now, the library is not available, it's often a lifeline for our seniors. And the question was asked, how can we help? Is there a way for people, for example, to adopt a neighbor type of program? And the answer is kind of not directly, but yes. The Millis Fund is a place where if you, are so inclined, they receive money as a 501(c)(3). They will send you a personalized letter for your taxes. And that money is used as a kind of a case of last resort for families who are adversely affected by a situation such as this. They lose their employment, they lose their ability to get nutritional food. The statewide program that is the parent of our local Meals on Wheels has made some adaptation to how the meals are packaged. They are available, you can contact the Council on Aging, who coordinates the Meals on Wheels program or the Meals on Wheels program itself through the Council on Aging, to make sure that somebody you care about is being covered. And the superintendent reports that the school is actively working on how to make meals available to the kids who are counting on them. So for residents who want to feel like they are doing something and don't really know what that could be, it's looking in on your neighbors and it is thinking if you have some extra food to donate to the food pantry, which has modified its operations to keep people safe while keeping the food supply available. And also the Millis Fund, which then is a potential financial resource for families. So those are really important aspects of all of this. And we, we just wanna thank everybody that's been helping out in the, across the community and the people seated here today. I think that will wrap. This is a long but important, yep, yeah.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I didn't, I thought that there was gonna be some opportunity to have a discussion about how the building would operate, but maybe that's some, because my office is kind of on the front line there by the door, is that something I should just talk to the town administrator about?
Probably, unless there's some implication, I mean, he's, he's saying that the, that the town hall is gonna be closed down and that people are gonna be contacting offices and the town clerk's office, like all offices, will have an outbound greeting to indicate how people can be served and how to communicate by email or to make an appointment. So I think probably beyond that, I would defer to any operational decisions to the town administrator, but that would be my personal suggestion.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think what we're trying to do is put the authority to do these things with the department heads and the town administrator. If you have some concerns, I'm certainly happy to.
No, that's fine, I'm, I'm happy to deal with.
It's not gonna be.
I didn't know if he had the, you know, complete authority. If he does, that's fine.
He does.
If he does something totally irrational, in which case we will intervene, but.
I did have a couple of questions. One is about the concept of public meetings being held digitally. Does, does that mean the public would be barred from attending?
That would, if I may, Madam Chair.
You might wanna hold up, we have Attorney Federoff, I think, is still on the phone to address, that's actually an upcoming agenda topic.
I will, I will talk.
Feel free to tackle it.
I will talk about what we have planned or what we'd like to do from a practical standpoint. Then I'll let town council talk about the, the legal aspects of it. Really, in trying to limit any spread of the coronavirus, what we're looking to do is have basically virtual meetings where it's remote participation and we will be setting up something where the public will be able to have at least audio access for, for those meetings. It's a technology we don't have as of today, but we're, we plan on having it set up by beginning of next week. So for the, I'll leave it to Kate to talk about what the legal requirements are as far as public access to meetings and the, the governor's declaration, if you could, Kate.
Yeah, sure, sure. The governor recently issued an order specifically relative to open meeting laws because, as you know, under the open meeting law, the public is required to have access. And it's physical access is the default rule. But here, based on this executive order, that physical access requirement has been eliminated. So although some towns may opt to have the public present, in, it sounds to me like Mike says, we're not allowing that, which is smart in order to kind of curb this spread. But the law requires that if you have tech, the capability technically to do it, you have to let the public have access virtually in a live way, so while the meeting's going on in real time. Now, if you don't have that capability, so there are, some of these softwares may be expensive or, you know, incapable of, of showing everything you need to show, you can just simply record the meeting and post that recording on the town's website so that folks at home can, at their leisure, go ahead and listen to the meeting.
So just so everybody knows, we actually have for open session Agenda Item 20060, which is Boards and Committees' Remote Participation Policy. And from Attorney Federoff, we received on Friday, basically, the elements of a policy with a motion to adopt remote meeting procedures. And as everybody knows, I've long been in favor of this because I believe this is how industry runs and I think it does not preclude, preclude public participation. In fact, I would argue it might expand it. So, the board received this, it includes remote participation minimum requirements. As Attorney Federoff just enumerated, procedures for remote participation in terms of how a meeting is managed. So notifying the chair, an announcement by the chair, which I did tonight, indicating that our colleague is tethered and participating remotely. We will be doing roll call votes if there's anything to do. If we're making any decisions, we won't be doing ayes and nays as a group, we will be doing roll call. Distribution of documents, we have a lot of, we have a lot of flexibility to do that. And as I said, I mean, this is really, I think, government catching up to the way other industries behave in the norm. So I would personally be in favor of adopting these policies.
Yeah, and just to be clear, there are two issues that are kind of independent of one another here. One is the, the remote participation policy that's on the agenda for tonight. And that is something that's been available for, for many years now to boards, but it has a little bit stricter requirements than what I recently spoke about. So a quorum has to physically be present. So in the case of your select board, two people would have to be physically present in the room, where this new emergency measure relaxes that requirement. So everyone could be sitting at home, so if circumstances change dramatically here and, and it was recommended not to go out, you could still theoretically have a meeting and everyone could call in. So, the, the policy that I provided was a policy that has been available all along and we can go into that more, in more detail when, when we hit that agenda item. But this emergency measure allows broad expansive use, doesn't require public presence in the meeting, doesn't require a quorum to be present. Yes, you're right, you have to follow those procedural requirements of roll call vote. And of course, you still need notice requirements under the open meeting law, so you post your agendas and all of those things remain the same. But it's two, two discussions there.
Are there any other things that you have on your hit list? Because I would be happy to jump to this since we're kind of waist-deep in it.
One thing was, is it poss, can the town administrator make the decision that maybe we could use the reverse 911 process to let people know about buildings being closed? And also the digital sign that the police department has? And I think we should remember that there are people in town who don't have computers.
We understand that.
And need to be reached somehow. And just the other thing is currently, with the current election schedule, we don't have to order ballots until after your March 30th meeting. So, that's only two weeks, but you have a little time.
I have a feeling the state, it sounded to me, if I was interpreting accurately, that the state was going to be helping us out on that because we're in good company with 351. helping us out on that because we're in good company with 351 municipalities across the state.
No, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any comments either of you want to make in terms of adopting remote meeting policies?
Will we jump into that?
Yeah, we might as well, since we kind of... We just started. If you're all there, I know that...
Madam Chair, if I might, I know, I believe that these three gentlemen will probably like to also talk about the Herman Shoe demolition.
Right. I haven't forgotten about it.
And then they may depart after that.
Okay.
Unless you'd like them to participate in the remote...
Trying to make everybody happy at once. Okay. Why don't we do that, then? Why don't we... Sorry, we're going to go backward to go forward. The next item on the agenda actually was the update on the Herman Shoe building demolition at 114 Union Street that has caught the eye of many a spectator. And the chief would like to speak about the status of that project and some safety instructions for all or and/or our building commissioner. Right now, I have whomever on the agenda. You pick.
I think we'll all speak to it.
Okay.
But I guess I'll start. So as many people have seen, 114 Union Street has started to be demolished, the old Herman Shoe factory building. It was being done in a systematic manner to save some of the historic beams and some other items in there. And they got to a point where a representative from DEP came out. There seemed to be a misunderstanding in some paperwork, and there was a stop order put on demolition. After several phone calls with the building commissioner and myself, town administrator, to the contractor, to DEP, it seems like we have it all straightened out and demolition will start up again tomorrow. And we're hoping that the building will be on the ground before the weekend. As we stated, it's an unsafe building as it sits. We've asked the residents to stay clear of the property. We have it fenced off for their security, and it is strictly for their security. It's a dangerous building with materials still hanging off of it. And as everybody can see, the building has a wonderful lean that it acquired, from what I hear, back in the '30s from a hurricane. Depending on who you talk to, they'll tell you differently, but that's the stories we've got. Mr. Jim Pietro has anything to add?
My department, the building department, has got a lot of action. A lot of people have been calling, visiting the building department over the... Since they started the demo. The demo process has gone through the proper process for permitting. The permit was issued. And like the chief says, there has been a lot of people who sees it and comes in and ask about it. So we investigated it. DEP showed up. And they stopped the project because they missed the paperwork that they were supposed to file. We met with them this morning, the owners and the demo contractor. I was in contact with them over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, with the chief, phone calls and text messages. So we held a meeting with them this morning at 9:00. The owner, the demo contractor, so they could inform us of all the paperwork that was filed with the DEP or wasn't filed with the DEP. We got that information, and we had a conference call. Myself, the chief, and Mike Jazinski talked to two high-ranking members of the DEP from their house, because they don't go into the office. And we went through the whole system. It appears that they thought there was asbestos on the roof, which there isn't. They took it off. They have all the paperwork for that. And they've allowed us, myself and the chief, to give the order to go ahead and knock it down and keep the material on the site till they can sift through and do what they have to do. So again, like the chief says, we want to make sure that the building gets on the ground. It's an unsafe building. We had... Typically, what happens when this goes through, it's down in a couple of days. There's, you know, some interest in some historical materials there, which sort of kind of made it awkward on how they were taking it down. Typically, that doesn't happen that way. So now that...
It does seem a little strange to go from the bottom up.
Yes.
Well, it's a...
That's what it looks like.
Right. It's a post-and-beam construction. It's a type IV construction, which is heavy beams. It's the shell that supports it. We have engineering from the previous owner who attempted to, you know, make something out of it. The hurricane was in 1954, I believe, from the paperwork, and it leaned seven inches to one side. But that structural engineer said it was perfectly safe and it wouldn't fall. And the adjustments they made to it at the time were sufficient to secure the building. So we do have engineering on that. Their engineers went in there, their, meaning the new owners. They had gone in there before all the demolition to try to save the building. They determined that the building couldn't be saved. So that's where we're at today. As the chief says, we hope that the building should be down by the weekend. They're mobilizing all their people there to be there tomorrow. So that's the best update we can give you.
And the only thing else I would wonder if we could touch on, and I'm sure you saw, Madam Chair, some of the comments about what's going in there. Unfortunately, rumor mill has it of 400-plus units going in there. And I know if the board, you know, wanted to clarify, you know, how many units were actually going in there so the public would be aware, that 400 units are not going to go onto that property.
I think I would look to DPW Director Jim McKay, who happens to be on the planning board, if he wants to come up and just address 114 Union Street. He looks really delighted about this surprise. I'd like to keep you on your toes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but that strictly will be under the ZBA. So it won't be under the planning board's jurisdiction for any of the design or anything else. We have met with them, and they are aware of the sewer problem that we have and the town itself, and they are in the calculations. So...
So how many units at last checked, do you recall?
I believe it's 96.
Okay.
98.
98.
98.
Okay. So it's 98 units with 140-some-odd bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
Something like that? Okay. It's what?
It's a four-story building. It's going to be a...
Which is kind of what it is now.
Correct.
Right?
It's going to have a garage underneath with three stories of living above it.
Okay.
Again, it's a 40B project, which many are aware of. But I felt that that number should be told because 400 is far off from 96.
It's not the right number.
That is definitely not even close.
And there was a lot of speculation to what was going in there, so I thought this would be a good time.
Not on the forum.
No. I figured it was a good chance to get out there.
No, no problem.
9X40B.
There we go.
And that's what it is.
Excellent. Any other comments from all this esteemed group here? No? Well, we've spent a good hour and a half on coronavirus and then the demolition of the building, and I think that's exactly really why people are tuning in tonight. We have some interesting building... Interesting conversations that do affect community life, so we hope people will be tuned in. We thank our fire chief and our director of Board of Health and Kathleen Lannan before you and our building commissioner for coming forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A couple of quick announcements, and I want to say as a blanket announcement that these are community activities that we should probably all expect will have some amount of change or cancellation. So the first is Milis Beautification Day, which is currently scheduled for May 2nd. As we all know, it is an outside activity to the extent that that is something that changes. The Garden Club has information on its website. Our town website has information. Jennifer Donahue, her information is also widely available. And so you'll probably hear more about that between now and May 2nd, so please put it on your calendar. There is a rabies clinic that has been announced for Saturday, April 4th. There are ways in which that could be managed to be comfortable and compliant with our new norm called social distancing. So again, I would pencil that in your calendar, but I would definitely check back on the website and specifically the animal control officer page to see if there is any change in plans for that. And I do regret to tell you that the director of the recreation program has looked mindfully at what is involved with the annual Easter egg hunt for children, which was on the calendar for Saturday, April 11th, and feels, under the current circumstances, that that, at this point, would be ill-advised. But again, things always change, so check back to the recreation department calendar and website to see if anything can be put in its place, perhaps at a later date. Do you have any other announcements to make? Okay. Thank you so much for everybody's patience tonight. We're going to return. Hopefully Kate Federoff is still there, Attorney Federoff, Town Council.
Hi, I am here.
We have before us a policy recommended by Town Council to address remote participation and operation of public meetings. Our duty to engage and provide the widest opportunity for the public to participate. From my perspective, these policies reflect much of what industry allows and certainly public companies allow for phone calls about stock and financial performance. So there is a lot of precedent. And what's happening now is that either towns have already adopted something like this and/or we are in a period of unprecedented change, and so we are adapting to it. So I think we have a policy that's fairly straightforward, but I'm going to defer to my colleagues to make any specific questions or ask Town Council any questions. Sir, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah, I have the material in front of me. I'm pretty familiar with the concept. I have some significant doubts about whether it's effective in the public realm. I don't think that what happens in private industry necessarily reflects what we're trying to do in terms of deliberation. And having experienced both, quite substantially, I might add. And I am concerned about the efficacy of the technology to make it work effectively. Having said that, I think that we have in front of us right now probably an excellent experiment. I don't mean tonight, but over the next few months, as to how this might work in a town like ours because we're using this as an emergency technique. And we'll learn by our experience. We'll be able to evaluate whether it's effective. We'll be able to evaluate what technology actually works. And frankly, to evaluate how, because it will fundamentally change the nature of the meeting. It just will. And anybody who thinks it won't hasn't really experienced it. And typically, what you find happening, in my experience, is that members of a committee, and this reflects just on the members of the committee, not those who are the public, members of the committee who are not present will participate in a different way than those who are present. Whether it's good or bad, it's a fact. And that is my experience, and that concerns me because I think if we don't encourage the committee members and whatnot to participate live, we lose something in the deliberation. Now, the policy does talk about the need for members to be present for the meeting to actually occur, because that's the nature of a public meeting. That's not what we're going to do now because we have the ability to test and evaluate whether or not this technique actually helps us with our public dialogue. So I would certainly not be in favor of adopting it now. I certainly think we have, again, the golden opportunity to even be more expansive in our experimentation. And we'll be able to evaluate over a period of... Very short period of time whether this is working well or where we need to actually make it work better. Because this is about not just this board operating in this fashion, but a broad range of committees and whatnot. So I urge this board to defer any decision on this until we've got this experience under our belts.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes?
Unmute. Okay. Good. Do you have anything to chime in as our acting IT director and remote participant?
Well, given the set of circumstances we're in, certainly for me, it's given me the opportunity to participate where I otherwise would not have been able to tonight, which is good. And I apologize, I am losing my voice. I understand where Mr. McCaffrey is coming from, and I appreciate that. But I also believe that with changing times, we have to evaluate all of the technologies that are available to us for a variety of different reasons. So deferring any decisions for a couple of weeks doesn't bother me very much. On the other hand, continuing to discuss it, to look at options, to understand what those options might be and what the implications might be. I'll be honest with you, the one concern I do have is I would prefer, and this is a personal feeling, this is not saying that neither of you would agree with it, but I happen to think that one of the fundamental issues we have to look at as a town is live participation of people present. That's how our society has grown up, at least through the present. And although technology can facilitate things when somebody is not able to be present, the one thing I would be most concerned with is to find that people say, "Well, I don't really want to come tonight." And you end up with virtually every meeting being a virtual meeting because it's much easier to deal with the meeting from home than is making the effort to come in and work with everyone. So that's... I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
That's what I'm most concerned with at this point, is that form of evaluation to see where we go from here. But in the interim, certainly, we have the opportunity now to evaluate it. And I will tell you that Mr. Jazinski and I will be working on that over the next several days, trying to decide which of a variety of technologies we want to implement, test them, and see if, in fact, they make sense for how this town might utilize them in the future. But again, keeping in mind some of the concerns I'm raising, which I just believe, to the greatest degree possible, we want to make sure people understand that we need to be present physically as much as possible, even if there are times when we can't be.
Town Council, do you want to weigh in on this, since you are seeing this change across many municipal government entities?
Sure. Yeah. And I... Please, believe me, I understand the concern because, you know, the idea I think Jim and Pete are raising relative to the level of participation, you know, you do see in private industry in that you don't want someone playing spider during the meeting because they're calling in. That said, my experience in the public sector, when I've been before boards where they've had a remote participant, again, it's a little bit different even than what we're dealing with tonight where you have Pete out and myself out, which is a little bit more cumbersome, you know, and odd. My experience is that it really is typically done in a kind of an emergency situation, personal emergency. So I have oftentimes seen it in the labor and employment issue where you need to set up a meeting super quick because you know sometimes when you're making employment decisions, they're urgent. So you don't have as much flexibility to schedule a meeting, you know, that's further out. So you might have one member of the select board call in. I don't actually see it used often. So unlike private industry where you have all of these conference calls with folks who are out of state and, you know, working together in this way, it really tends to be, from my perspective, really in more rare situations. So, you know, it's really a policy issue. There's... The law allows for it, but the question for the town is, is that right for the town? And will it encourage more participation? But is that a good thing? Because I understand your point, too. Will it be less valuable participation if someone's by phone or internet or something like that? I have found it to be very useful myself because, again, it's only been in really unusual circumstances that the person has needed to call in. That's just my two cents.
Let me just try to draw some distinction here. There's a distinction between...
Let me just try to draw some distinction here. There's a distinction between having the ability for a member of the board to call in to participate, or an outside advisor. It's a different thing where if what we're trying to do is allow people remotely, who are not members of the board, to either testify or present or have a conversation by some kind of call-in mechanism. Those are totally different things.
So that's different, yeah.
And that's totally different.
Right.
And what we're going to have over the next three or four weeks, or maybe a month, is the latter. We're going to have meetings, particularly if it's a hearing, where all the members are calling in and the public is calling in. So this is actually a much more robust experiment, if you will, than simply allowing a member of the board who's physically unable to attend would be very difficult. I mean, that's the fact of the matter. I mean, and I, you know, I
Agreed.
And that, so, I don't think there's a reason to do this now, and certainly if we're going to do it now, I'm not going to support it, because I'm going to know, I'm going to learn a lot about what happens over the next month or two, about what the technology is, how it works. Clearly, it's physically possible to do. I know that. I've seen it happen, and I've seen the participation. And I'm not saying that those kinds of meetings don't have good outcomes, because they do. But they're different. Just as an example, and I'm not trying to point out anything, the verbal participation by our colleague tonight, who's on the phone or on the screen, has been significantly less than when he's here present. It's just a fact. And that will happen no matter what. And it'll be even more the case if it's on audio only. I was just in a meeting on Wednesday at another board, and people who are usually very open in discussion spoke very little. Not because they weren't paying attention, it's because they couldn't participate in the meeting at the same level. Now, that doesn't mean it's something that is, we should always stay with because we can't keep doing the same thing over and over again. I understand that. But this is not just the technologies available. This changes the way deliberations occur. And there's just no doubt about it. Doesn't mean the outcomes aren't good or better, it's just going to be different. So I don't see any reason to dive into the permanent policy until we've had this opportunity in real time to experiment with how this is going to work and how we feel about it after a month or two.
So Attorney Federoff, has your firm offered guidelines through the town administrator specific to this moment in time, how boards should conduct themselves, organize meetings, establish quorum, and the like? I mean, it's, in truth, on March 30th, I mean, we're closing Town Hall. On March 30th, we might be in a situation where we're not having an in-person meeting ourselves. So I guess I'm looking for
Yeah.
How are we doing this? Are we following guidelines that are relaxed, and are they explicit and clear, or are we not? And some of that has to do with, I think, our acting IT Director and what can be put forward. I can speak from experience that within an hour and a half of coming here tonight, I was on an hour-long call with multiple people using Zoom. And I found it highly effective, and I would say everybody participated rather equally.
Yeah, so we sent an email off to all of our town administrators for the various municipalities that we represent, kind of outlining what Governor Baker's order provided. Now, the technology is different for each town, from town to town. So I could work with, and your technology guy happens to be here, so I could work with Pete to try to establish, you know, what could be the most effective way to get these meetings in place, whether it be through a call-in number, or whether it be through a web service. And then we can provide a written advisory to all the boards and commissions.
Well, but let me just say that what we're doing is implementing an opportunity for meetings that are virtual, but not just for the people who are engaged, who are on the committee. It's for the public to participate.
I know, yeah.
So that's a different
That's the trick.
Yeah, but if that is successful, for example, and we find that it is a robust solution, we know we can't do that under the open meeting law, when the emergency declaration is suspended. We'll have to pull it back a little bit, because the law allows you to hold meetings as long as somebody's in the room, a quorum is in the room, the chair is in the room, and the public has access. That's what the exception allows you to do, which is much less than what the declaration is permitting us to do. So
That's correct.
I don't want to have, I don't think, from an emergency point of view, we want to tie our hands in any way. On the other hand
No, no, no. I think what she's meaning is give a memo on what the order provides as opposed to this document.
Well, I mean, I think it's just really important, if I'm in the group here, and I don't know how we would implement, you know, granularly, how we would necessarily implement the shift to the relaxed, open-meeting policies, in part because we haven't figured out what type of technology we will install. And again, these are not expensive technologies, everybody should know. These are kind of widespread platforms. The one question that I think is on a lot of organizations' minds is whether or not this is the week to be doing this, because there's such saturation, because so many companies that never had to worry about this, and institutions, higher education being just one of them, are now all moving to these same type of virtual interaction platforms. So they're all testing them at once, and so who knows, you know, how. You want a program probably that's really tested. Something like Zoom should be able to handle the crush, but it's still going to be a crush.
Well, I think, if I might offer, that's part of what Mike and I need to put into place and test over the next week or so. There are a variety of options out there, as you mentioned earlier, whether it's join me, go to my PC, WebEx. There are so many Zoom that we need to look at them, understand that the reason we're looking at a variety of different ones is not that any one of them doesn't work. Each one of them offers something a little different in some respects. And it's the ability to permit lots of people from outside, if they choose to, join the meeting, to be able to do so. That's not what every technology will permit being done. And that's what we're trying to evaluate right now. We don't want to initiate something that says, "Well, you have to have a license for product X even to use it." What we want is the ability for, to be able to say, "Here's where you dial into," and anyone can dial into that during this period and become a participant. And we want to make it as easy as possible. We want to also look at the costs. We want to look at the clarity. We want to look at a whole variety of things to make sure that this is something that's suitable for us in the town. And that's where I rely on users such as Mike and his staff to evaluate their end of it, as well as the technology. So that's what we'll be looking at, if that's satisfactory to the two of you.
Well, yeah, from my point of view, the policy is, we want to allow virtual meetings that are authorized under the emergency order from the governor, which includes the ability to hold a hearing, which requires a different level of availability to the applicants.
Right.
To the extent that council can tell us, this is what we're trying to get at, then the implementation becomes the responsibility of the administration and the IT Director to make it work. And then, once we have selected the platform, then you have to provide at least some level of training, or at least awareness, to potential users, whether it be the Conservation Commission, or the Planning Board, or the Board of Health. So it doesn't just happen, as you indicate, Pete, with snapping your fingers. I mean, you have to know what is you're trying to get done. You have to evaluate the technology. You've got to roll it out. And if this can all be done in the next 24 to 48 hours, thank you very much for your good, hard work. But the fact of the matter is, we closed the Town Hall to public participation
Right.
Starting tomorrow. So a public meeting can't be held here with an audience because the building's not available.
And potentially on March 30th.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, certainly for this board.
Right.
But there's other boards that are scheduled to meet before us
Right.
That won't be able to meet in this building.
Right.
So either, as was, I think, indicated by council, you can make the decision that you'd rather wait till you can have a regular kind of meeting, so you just defer. But if you have to take action, then you're going to have to use this capability.
Right.
And from my perspective, that's the task at hand, not just jumping to a policy that's going to be in place after we do this. That's just my view.
So why don't we look at taking this, why don't we ask Town Council, to Mr. McCaffrey's point, if you could kind of map out kind of an interim, here's our guidance for you to implement the governor's relaxed, open-meeting law policy, maybe speaking with our acting IT Director and the town administrator, so that then it becomes a memo of instruction to the various department heads and boards and groups that are having hearings or public meetings, so they understand what to do and how to do it. I mean, I will tell you that I'm in a situation, I'm in an industry right now that is kind of learning on the fly, literally. And so one of the things I would recommend to the acting IT Director is to find a technology where the self-help tools are as robust and impenetrable as is the platform itself. All right. And he'll say yes, but he's unfortunately
He's muting, right.
He's muting for good cause.
Yes.
I apologize.
The answer to your question, though, is I'm happy to put together a memo about what the parameters are and process.
All right, that sounds great. Any other questions on this topic? Yes, okay.
Yes, Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I'm going to speak on behalf of the public
Yeah.
Here. I am concerned, I understand, this is an emergency situation, we're learning on the fly. I'm concerned about the fact that the public will not be able to attend a hearing, and you have potentially a butters to somebody who wants to do something on their property. They can't attend the meeting, and they may not have an IT guy to help them figure out how to participate
Mm-hmm.
From home, or if they only have audio participation, they can't see any plans. I think you should keep all that stuff in mind, because
Oh, you're 100% right. It's not a perfect science. I mean, one of the things that the, it sounds like the guidelines you're recommending, Mr. Gazinski, if I hear you right, is the ability to make, for example, an appointment to maybe acquire plans, like maybe somebody could leave with plans or use them. It's not going to be perfect. It never is. I mean, I think we're trying to work within both the situation at hand and the times in which we live, period. So, and we have to find out that it's broken, right? We can't declare it broken before we try it. So I guess what I would say is, let's find the person who says, "This isn't going to work for me." They call you, and they say, "This isn't going to work for me," and then we work on a solution to accommodate that particular person's interest. But that in the communication that we provide, I mean, right now, we post public meetings on the building, so that presumably is one way that people learn about agendas. And now, obviously, we work with our website, and we're about to talk about social media beyond that. So those two means, I don't believe we mail or email agendas to people, but maybe that's something that we look at. If that's, in fact, if people want to be on a listserv for getting an agenda by email, that's maybe something to look at. But those are the two ways in which we currently communicate, public meetings.
No, I understand that. No, I'm talking about butters who've been notified that there is a public hearing
Right.
And they want to participate.
I think we have to provide
Due to the technology
I think we have to, I think we have to have in the communication, if you can't participate this way, this is who to call. And then maybe there's some follow-up communication. Maybe there's something that can be put in the mail. I don't know.
You know, for a second, I mean, if a butter can't be heard and makes it known that he can't be heard, or she can't be heard, then I would suspect that the Planning Board would defer decision, because they know there's a member of the public
Right.
Who wants to provide input who can't. And there's no board here that's trying to steamroll this thing.
No.
We're just trying to get through the next month, given the fact that we have, you know, an emergency at our feet. So I agree with you. I'm very committed, and I think we all are, to making sure that the public has the opportunity to weigh in. And even more so, when it's the Planning Board or ZBA, because it's typically what's going to happen on the property right next to theirs. They live there. So that's really important. And I think that some of the material that we've received from council puts some caveats in there. And so I agree that it's important for us to be able to provide the public with the opportunity for input. And I believe earlier, there was a possibility, either one of the gentlemen here is that, you know, might want to just cancel those meetings for a month, because we can't deliver a true public meeting. And if we have to do that, then we're just going to have to do that. I would just like to be, from my perspective, make some techniques available to the Planning Board, which will then make its own independent judgment as to whether that capability allows them to reach a fair and complete decision.
And what I would say to Town Council is, in that very situation where somebody determines, hey, because of a public inability to participate in a reasonable way, to look at, does the town have any liability for pushing off decisions? I mean, you could argue this many different ways, but I think we would be looking for Town Council to provide instructions to the town about whether or not we do push things off, kind of ad infinitum, is the town in a position of liability for not making a decision because of the public meeting process being impacted? I think this is all uncharted territory.
Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, the public hearing is obviously the trickiest one, right? Because the public not only is allowed to attend, but they're allowed to participate. Whereas in a meeting, you don't have to allow the public to participate. It's really up to the chair to decide about that. But a public hearing can't shut it down. So the law, the emergency measure that was put in place specifically requires that in that circumstance, the public participation needs to be a real one. So I agree with Jim in that if there is a member of the public who notifies the town that he or she is unable to participate in a meaningful way, it would defeat that public hearing requirement. So in terms of liability, liability is kind of a funny word. I mean, there could be appeals that were taken because they didn't have the right and opportunity. There could be open-meeting law complaints that are filed. So all of those things could happen. So the hearing part is really tricky, and we're encouraging boards to try to seek extensions. The hard part is, extensions are typically done by agreement. And as I said earlier, although I suspect most applicants are going to be understanding and flexible, there may be some that aren't. And that's when you have to convene the hearing and make a decision in the way you best can. But we can address those on kind of an ad hoc basis, circumstance by circumstance.
Yeah, I would suggest that since we're entering prime construction season, that flexibility is probably going to be somewhat impacted, simply because construction has to be done in a certain time of year. I just, I received a communication, let me just read this, from the Chair of the Planning Board, that his message essentially says that the Planning Board will make every opportunity for the public to weigh in, because they don't want anybody to feel that a meeting was had and is invalidated by the lack of public participation.
If I can also comment that we have to remember that Milis Media does provide us, at least with the video and
Right.
Audio, hopefully, what's taking place during the meeting. We also have the ability to set up the ability for people to call in. We haven't really used that, and that's something I'm going to talk with Mike about tomorrow and the next few days. So there is a two-way communication under those conditions. None of that precludes the use of a PC to participate, if they have that ability, if they want to do it. But none of it says, "We have to use a PC." In other words, existing technologies of phone and a TV will, in fact, allow a participant to fully participate and ask the board and interact with the board with respect to what's going on. So I think all of these have to be taken into account. I don't say any of it's simple, but it's certainly a change in the thought process of how we do things.
All right, that sounds All right, that sounds good. Is there any other, any other comments?
I just, this all sounds good, and I understand it's all emergency, and nobody knows exactly how we're going to do this. But to just keep in mind that sometimes technology doesn't work, even though you think it's going to. And I still have three people who say they can't hear us tonight, so they may have been able to hear us at previous meetings, but they can't tonight for some reason. So you might want to have, have a little flexibility in terms of whether you allow certain people to attend a hearing, like maybe the abutters or something, if they are not able to participate in any other way, and, you know, they can keep the six-feet distance, and, you know, all, it all depends on the particular situation, but just to keep some other options open. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that somebody still can't hear, and it sounds like that probably has to do with a cable provider, and, no?
I just checked on, we both, Mike has Comcast and his office, and I have Verizon and both, they were both on and both.
But that doesn't mean somebody could still not be able to participate for some reason, remotely, definitely.
But the volume sounds like, so the chair of the planning board would appreciate it if town council would include in the recommendations to clarify any liability on the town to delaying a meeting in this current time. They want to make sure if they say to a petitioner for a development, "We don't feel like we can necessarily convene the right type of public meeting," or "We've specifically heard from somebody who says they can't participate in the way that they normally could, because we've shut town hall," or whatever, they want to know, they want to make sure that the board itself doesn't have any, take on any burden for the town in doing that.
Yeah, and I can also, so I can talk about that, and I can also, it might be helpful to have a chart to show what the constructive approval deadlines are. So for example, special permit, it can go on after you open the hearing, whereas I think a variance expires once that, you know, after a certain passage of time, regardless of whether or not you've opened the hearing or not. So I can provide kind of a chart to show what deadlines they should be aware of.
And I think it's not lost on me, I just want to say and wrap this up and move forward, is that the communication that I've been having with relevant issues actually was made possible through the magic of technology, because I've been hearing from people directly who have been looking for a way to not attend the meeting in person, for whatever reason, or weren't able to attend the meeting in person, and therefore were looking for a social media tool in order to get some good information and do so. The only difference is that I think we're looking for something where they might be able to participate in a way that's more transparent to everybody else. So I'm just relaying, you know, somebody asking a question, so, you know.
Madam Chair, I would point out that that's all well and good, but at this point, what's happening in that dynamic is one member of the board is receiving input outside of the room from unidentified people, not the planning board chair, because you've already heard that that's what he had to say, and you identified him. But if we're going to have people comment, and those, and those comments are going to be considered by the board, they need to be shared with the board. Otherwise, we're not really, you know, following open meeting law in its spirit by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, I'll identify one of the others, and that was the director of the rec department who canceled the Easter egg hunt, because that decision hadn't been made, so anyhow. So we are going to say au revoir to our colleague, Mr. Jermaine, who is in fact seriously feeling under the weather, and thank you so much for everything that you've been able to contribute tonight. And we certainly wish you very, very quick recovery, and I think it would beg anybody's curiosity that he has not tested positive for anything that people should be alarmed about. He's just on the mend from having been sick over the course of the winter, and hopefully will be looking to brighter days ahead. Does that sound accurate, sir?
Sounds fine, thank you very much. I do apologize, but I'll talk with you all later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excellent. I think we're going to move on to, because it's in the, it's a cousin of the same topic, which is a townwide technology policy with a future amendment to cover social media procedures. One of the things I'm really proud of this board for doing is to acknowledge the fact that in fact, we, we do need to expand and modify and modernize how we communicate to be transparent with the community. We've been doing a lot of things in that realm. The new website is probably the most evident. Policies like this, expand that. We have acknowledged that there are several very prominent town-facing departments that already have established social media presence and/or their own website, or both. And so they, kind of the train has left the station, and so now with the benefit of a lot of learning and experience with other municipalities and evolving case law, town council, who's still on the phone, which is tremendous, Attorney Federoff, has provided to this board what is basically an enterprise technology policy, which gets into kind of a lot of managerial standards by which anybody representing the town government or town services would be conducting themselves or presenting content in whatever format it is to be presented, with an eye toward adding as an addendum to this, or an element of this policy, a specific structured policy for any department that wants to be expanding their outbound social media communication, which of course would have been extremely helpful with the situation in which we have found ourselves currently. So I think with that, I'm going to ask Attorney Federoff to comment on the genesis of the policy before us, and maybe the town administrator can tell us what action you would like us to take.
Yeah, so I was forwarded a copy that the, the web committee of a policy for the process of posting news items, that the web committee had put together, and it was a really great start. They did a super job, and I think they covered all of the boxes that you need to check in order to have an appropriate procedure for posting items in a way that's responsible and protects the town. So what I did was, I actually had a conversation with the town administrator, and we talked about, you know, should we have this policy as a standalone policy in light of the fact that you have an existing social media policy, and there are other issues that really are kind of critical to the town, mainly maintaining a secure system, maintaining town equipment, all of that kind of stuff. So what I did was, I, I had explained to Mike that I had kind of a global information technology policy, which incorporates your kind of typical town policies, and those are social media, the, meaning the do's and don'ts of social media. So something, you have something similar already in place, but it's essentially curbing what people can do, employees can do, on and off duty, on social media, maintaining town policies and the like. In addition, there's an email policy, because although emails are quick and easy, sometimes employees forget that they're actually official communications. So it kind of puts everybody in check to remind them that this is a professional organization, and, and we're maintaining compliance with our town policies, and still presenting a professional image. And then finally, just the actual hardware and software of the town to try to protect that, to ensure that no malware is downloaded, to ensure that employees are productive at work and not distracted by kind of external, external things that can be found on the internet, rather than performing their jobs. So all of that kind of standard stuff was taken, and then this posting process was incorporated into that global policy. And then it, the idea is it's sort of a one-stop shop, so that employees, and if you want this applicable to boards, employees and board members can easily find your technology policy and search for what they're looking for within that policy. So essentially, the process, policy is part, uh, part, what am I, numeral eight, process for posting news, news items. And it essentially affords the department head the, the responsibility of posting those news items. So if there's a water main break, obviously that would come out of DPW and be posted on their page. If there was an emergency at the fire department, which warranted posting, the fire department would post that on their page or their other social media account. Now, the trick is to get it on the main page, that has to go through the selectmen. But we also were mindful of the fact that the selectmen's office is, is responsible for a wide range of things in, over the course of any day, so we wanted to put some brackets around, you know, when things can be submitted, in what form, so they're to be emailed to the town administrator's office, they're to be in PDF, they should have two days of lead time, unless it's an emergency. And, you know, a whole host of other things. We wanted to also ensure that the department heads had the responsibility of posting, because ultimately, it is a discretionary decision whether or not to post anything at all, and then the content itself should be, you know, compliant with this policy. So we wanted, even though the department head can delegate the responsibility of creating the content at the initial stage two staff, we felt it was more appropriate for the final stamp of approval to be with the department head, who has broader authority. So those were the things we were thinking about when we put this together, and I, I'd take any questions if anyone has anything.
Well, I'm sure we do, but I guess my question really goes to the town administrator, which is ultimately, you have oversight of the departments, and you're looking for a policy that provides a standard of quality. And so I'm, we would really be looking to you for your comments on how you would operationalize this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this policy would be a great step forward. I know we've been looking at really a global policy to really administer all the technology in town, and to be able to reach the public in a responsible, thoughtful way with information. I would request that, you know, the board take this under consideration and bring it up on the next meeting. I would like a little more time to review it myself, there's been a lot going on as of late, and I haven't had time to study it to the detail. I would like, having said that, I have full faith in Attorney Federoff, and I'm sure she's put together a great document, and I would like the chance to review it, and maybe follow up with some questions of her, if I have some over the next week, week and a half. And I think I'd be ready to make the formal recommendation to the board as to the acceptance of the policy at your next meeting.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Madam Chair, I guess that I, I would support that, although I would like to hear not only about the review, but I'd like to have some specifics. I mean, it's one thing to say department heads, but I mean, in the major areas, who's responsible for it? And I want a realistic evaluation of our ability to actually execute this.
That, that actually is my biggest concern, and what I want to look at.
But then, if this board feels that this is a priority, then this board needs to recognize the fact that something else is going to have to not get done, that might be less of a priority. Or ultimately, I mean, frankly, I read this, and I said, "What a great policy for an organization with a really good communications director." We'd really be able to get this stuff out, it covers everything, it allows input, it allows oversight, peer review, editing, and boom, it's done. And we don't have that. So how is it going to work so that it's effective? That's what I'd like to know. I mean, I would give an example of some of the postings that were done by the department of, our health department on Friday. We got together, we discussed it, department heads talked about it, content was developed, it was on the website by the afternoon. Now, if we can do that, then we are really ready to roll. But if we can't, then we don't want, we need to understand that. And I don't think, the thing that is, we have to avoid, and I think all of us would agree, is what unfortunately the old site left us with. Stale, old stuff that wasn't very useful to people. And people will go to a website only so many times, and my colleague will know better than I, and if they can't find what they want, they won't come again. And then the social media just, that's just another medium, that's all it is. And maybe, I would like to get some input, and maybe it's here and I just don't see it. I have a, I have a concept, which could be totally wrong, that a social media capability is a short, get-your-attention accurate, get-your-attention piece of material. If you want more...
Go to the website.
The website has the stuff.
That is accurate.
It actually is, is in here. So if we're going to do that, then who's going to take care of the initial, who's going to take care of the secondary, et cetera, et cetera? And I, I would also just like to have some reference to an item that was brought up by the town clerk, is we have other capabilities as well. We know that, at least, I shouldn't say that. My impression is that the school system has a list serve, listserv capability that's very far-reaching and very good way of disseminating information to the constituency.
And so does our website.
Yeah, but the listserv is not very robust, because people are not signing up for it.
Right.
So we want to encourage them to do that.
Right.
So we can pump out messages in a number of different ways. And my experience in another location where I occasionally spend time, that town has a much more regular use of reverse 911, certainly with emergencies, but other things, like, you know, some content in a reverse 911, for this situation, would have reached a lot of people as well.
Right.
And when I visit that other location, I will be very surprised if I don't have a message on my machine saying, "This is the town of blank, here's what you should do."
We're not even going to give you a hard time for having a machine.
It's not a machine.
So I, I agree with the notion of having the person who is, would be responsible for implementing this. I mean, we've had the website and communications committee, the board adopted communications, I believe, as its number-one goal for fiscal '20. So let's see if we can maybe even get out of our own way, but give us a tool in the town that will, to your point, exactly what you're saying, drive people to the website. Here's a message, drive people to the website for more information.
And I do also want to thank again the, the website committee for developing the overarching view of what we should be doing, and town council for making sure it's legal. But now we got to think about implementation.
All right, that sounds good. And I think, if, unless there are any other questions or comments, I do believe Attorney Federoff gets to go back to her real life, her altered life with kids home from school and such, and so we are very, very grateful for all of your time and creativity and professional insights. So thank you very much for spending the evening with us on the phone. Yeah?
May, Madam Chair, before we, we release town council, was the board going to have any discussion tonight regarding the timing of the town meeting coming up tonight, or are we going to put, have that discussion on March 30th?
Well, I think the, I think there's a general sentiment that we're a little bit waiting to hear what the state is going to do, but there's a general sentiment that it would probably make sense to put it off, but I don't think we were prepared to come forward with anything other than dates.
Well, yeah, my feeling is that the sooner the better. I don't, we have to ratchet back from posting warrant deadlines and whatnot.
Right.
So if we were to, I, I would hate to do it without the three members of the board to participate. My feeling at this point in time is, the second Monday in June, it should be our target date. That's, so people, at least consider that. I think we will have safely, assuming there will be one, escape conflict with high school graduations and whatnot. I know it's in a different room, but we want to make sure that room's available. But delaying it by 30 days, I think, is, assuming that the situation is under control, I think it makes sense, but I, I agree with the chair, that we ought to have the full board weigh in on it. And I know that I've had some contact with the FinCom... the FinCom Chair, the School Committee Chair, the incumbent moderator, um, and the planning board chair, all seem to be in agreement that that would be a good idea to move the town meeting. Um, and of course, whether, whatever we do with the election is going to have to wait whatever, await whatever legislative opportunities we have. But we do have the authority, clearly, and town council has advised us that, to reschedule the town meeting. So I, I would say to the public, it's highly likely we will move it to give ourselves enough time to do the work we need to do in this emergency and also do the budgetary work we need to do to present a, you know, a balanced budget to the town during June. Now, we will have authority apparently to defer that even further.
Right.
Uh, which from my perspective, unless something happens that is really unforeseen, uh, it's not a desirable outcome. We should try and work hard to have a budget ready for fiscal 21 come July 1.
But just to be clear, the reasons for moving that out, um, I think have less to do with preparedness because I'm looking at the finance director. I mean, everybody in this building has been working on budgets, although they've been certainly derailed by how do they have to reinvent their, their day-to-day operations. But what's really happening is that to have a robust, uh, public participation, we have to be living in a time in which we can all be together, and it will be kind of hard to socially distance if we pack the auditorium. So-
Well, yes, some people are, there's some areas where there's a, you know, eight-week prohibition. I don't, how long does the governor's current state of emergency, doesn't really say, right?
Well, I think for schools it's three weeks-
Yeah.
-from tomorrow. I believe for, uh, restaurants, it goes even slightly beyond that.
Yeah.
But there was one, it's either the federal government or the state government which issued, you know, or the CDC said no more than 25 people together for the next eight weeks. Well, eight weeks takes us beyond May 4th, so.
I think that's the state, right? State's 25, yeah.
As the chief said, there's news everywhere.
So that's why we will, uh, all be working together. So I think that, I think we can confidently say there, change is the order of the day, right? And it's uncontrollable. And what we're trying to do is get, is to make change with information, with fact, um, and to do so, um, in a way that, uh, will allow us to be responsive to the current situation. So I think it makes sense to put it on the March 30th agenda.
I, I think that from my perspective also, Madam Chair, if we could have the town administrator and the finance director, you know, develop a timetable, it's a straw man, I know, assuming that that's the date, because I would like to then be able to, or we would like to be able to forward that to both the school committee and the finance committee so they can adjust their scheduling of the work that they need to do.
And I guess one of the questions we would have is to the extent the state, for example, might have excise tax bills on a certain date, and therefore the town is collecting those and things like that. So if there's communication that needs to happen about any relaxation of penalty or any shift in deadlines, all of that needs to be communicated and probably by, uh, you know, sooner rather than later, I guess. I don't know if you-
Yeah, we're keeping a eye on the legislation as it's unfolding. So, uh, you know, I've checked multiple times today, uh, where the legislation is in committee and all of that. And so we'll regularly update, um, you all about status and, and legislative changes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Attorney Fedorov. Thanks for chiming in. Glad you didn't say goodbye. Any other questions for which we need legal counsel here? Lisa Harden has something to ask you while you're here.
Okay.
And then we're really going to let you go.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. Uh, just a possibility, I know the town election date could change, but you have on the agenda here, the ballot question. And I was just wondering, I don't really need it until May 30th, if you needed her to participate in that discussion. You don't.
Any advice on that, Kate? I mean, I would, I would think-
I'm sorry, she, she, I, I heard a paper, so I-
Well, we, we have a ballot question on our agenda this evening that Jay had worked on and forwarded to us for the board to, um, vote to include it on the annual town election. Um, you know, knowing that we may, that, that date may be changed, is there a reason for them not to act on it this evening? Or should they act on it and then if the election date changes, just take an amended vote at a later time?
Yeah, so I think you can feel free to go ahead and take the action and, um, you can, um, is, so is the motion that's been prepared, is it to approve the ballot question for the election on X date? Or is that, is it so specific as that? What does it just say as that?
It was approved at the fall town meeting to change the name of this board to Select Board. So it's all of the references, um, that update that, you know, on trend before the state does it for us.
Yeah, so the, I believe the actual, yeah, the, um, the question itself does not contain any dates for the election, but I, I imagine the board's motion would include, you know, a date of the annual town election. That's, that's, that's the question.
Yeah. So then, so then just you can approve it, I mean, then everyone at home would have notice of, of what the question is. You can approve it, um, for, to place on the annual town election on the current date as scheduled, and then go ahead at a later date and amend that motion to correct the date to whatever you postpone it to.
Okay. All right, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, sounds good. Attorney Fedorov, we're really going to let you go this time.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for, for having me tonight. And thank you again for, um, the confession on letting me call in. I appreciate it, and so does my family.
Well, I think that you, yes, and I think that, uh, the quality of your, uh, input was no less valid with you being on the phone than if you were being here, although we always like to see you.
You missed my smile, Lauren.
I did. I did. But I'll see you tomorrow morning, I think. So, there you go.
Right, right, right. True.
Excellent. All right.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up, our DPW Director. You know, can I just swap an item really fast? And, because I think we only have, no, forget it, I can't do it.
Well, Madam Chair, actually-
We build these, we build these things and they're not fluid. And I know Jim McKay's now has a sharp object in his hand.
Just a quick question, Madam Chair, and I know the finance director probably does want to stick around to, uh, understand the stormwater credits discussion. But we do have an item later on the agenda for budget presentations for the finance department and executive office. Um, uh, just wanted to find out if there's something you wanted to defer on that or make any change. Again, we don't, you don't have a full board here this evening.
Right, right.
Um, and it's, it is starting to get to the later side.
Right.
So at a minimum, is the board okay delaying that discussion to a future meeting?
Yeah, so my question, I really, of my colleague, is I just, I think that everybody's listening, um, capacity is very focused on this one prevailing social issue. So I don't think that, uh, a full-blown budget presentation is really going to get the, the spotlight and consideration that it deserves. And at the same time, the budget has been posted for some time. So I also would want to ask whether or not it is enough. I think that there's concern that it gets into the hand of the finance committee. That's really the role here, is to be a springboard for doing that. Um, I personally reviewed it. I don't have any comments about it because we were a part of building it. We, we changed the scope of the staff within the finance department. We've asked the finance director to consolidate the, the functional areas, um, that the position oversees to include the treasurer, collector, and the assessor's office. We know the changes that have occurred within the town administrator's office. And so I guess my proposal is one of whether or not there needs to be a specific, um, kind of drawn-out budget presentation specific to these offices, or is it enough to say the information is there so that we're not holding up the finance committee review process? I'm kind of looking to my left for that question.
Well, I certainly would not favor presentation to the finance committee before presenting to the board, even if it's a quick presentation. It doesn't have to be tonight, and I agree that it shouldn't be because Pete's not here.
Right.
But I mean, this is an important function. It covers a lot of areas. I do have some questions. So I think we should, uh, schedule them for the next meeting, and, uh, we can inform the finance committee that you'll be available after that. And I, I truly believe that a sequence of events here, you know, includes presentation of the budget to the board. And if we want to make changes before it gets to the finance committee, that's our obligation. And after that, you know, we can present. Now, there's also economic development in here, is one of the items, which I assume we would also defer, but-
Right.
I think, I think it's certainly worthy of some time on the agenda.
Okay. So, are you fine with making that at a future meeting to be announced? I mean, we can put a placeholder on the 30th, we just don't know what the 30th is going to bring, so.
Well, it'll be the six-hour meeting.
I hope not. I hope not.
It'll be a virtual meeting anyway.
Right. It'll be quicker. All right, so, that's, is that the question, asked and answered?
Yes.
We're, we're all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess in the meantime, if there's any questions that anybody has, and we can communicate this to our colleague Pete, maybe we can make sure that you have them in advance so that you can anticipate whatever those might be. Sound good? Thank you. Um, Dr. James McKay of the DPW is going to come forward to speak-
Probably the quickest.
He's going to speak to the town about expanding eligible stormwater credits. So everybody will remember that in the construct, in the development of this, um, enterprise utility fund for managing labor and budgetary resources, there were specific standards that our expert consultants, Kleinfelder, recommended to us that were fairly stringent. And what we're trying to do is achieve some balance between, um, achieving the target environmental benefits from the, that the stormwater utility has to support in order for us to be environmentally compliant for a whole host of, um, permits. But at the same time, to do so in a way that incentivizes a homeowner to, um, put some mitigation steps into place, conservation and such. And so now I think what we're doing is we're, we've identified maybe the need to revisit, um, some of those standards. So-
I make a motion to adjourn. You said it all. No. No, you did a good job. Seriously. Um, so the question, uh, when I, when I was here the last, the board requested, how much of a, um, percentage do we build into the budget for, um, credits? And we did, uh, it was 4% of the $650,000 budget, so we have $25,000, you know, built into the budget itself. And we tried to highlight, I talked to Betsy and Andrew and after the meeting, and we feel that these are the four, uh, three, you know, specific objectives that we should look at to not, I, I don't want to say ease, lessen the, um, the restrictions in the credit manual, but, um, yeah, to ease, ease them a little that people can get a credit. Because right now, the way the credit manual is, as reported, it, no one can ever get a credit. And again, it's not that we want, um, full-fledged everybody to get the 20% credit, because then everybody else's rates are going to, their rates are going to go up. If, if everyone gets a 20% credit, then everybody's credits are going to go up. Um, the rates will go up. And it's our goal, uh, we're still in our third year, so the rates really can't go up. Um, the board voted when, when, um, the stormwater was implemented, that we would keep the budget, uh, for three years at the rate that, you know, that we currently have. And this will be the third year of that, um, vote. So I guess I'm at, it, uh, and in this, we have implemented that rain barrels and that type of, um, that will be part of the discussion that we may come back to the board with for some, um, you know, credit. And the letter that you're looking at and marking up is for, uh, is the letter that we, as, uh, I reported, we have 17, um, people that have applied for credits, and they were all denied at the first stage, and they're, uh, coming to you for an appeal process. And this will be sent out to them to let them know that we haven't, you know, forgotten that appeal process. So I guess when I'm asking, is there, um, and I did review this with the town administrator and the treasurer collector. Um, so is there anything else that you think should, need to be added to it?
Well, you probably wouldn't be able to read my writing, but, um, I do have a couple of language changes. I do think this needs to happen. Um, to me, I don't want to micromanage this process. I, that's, I guess, what I would say. I think what we, from my perspective, I would feel favorable to authorize, first of all, the homeowner isn't going to know who Kleinfelder is. So that's why, from a language perspective, I think, first of all, you're the lead. So the DPW, in conjunction with, you know, or you as the department chair, um, in conjunction with your expert consultant or whatever. To me, the, the, the person who's the point person is you and not an outside consultant. So, um, so I wrote a couple of language ideas. Um, I would feel comfortable authorizing you, um, to go through this process. And basically what you're saying to the homeowner is we're acknowledging the fact that you have made an appeal. Um, we are in the process of revisiting the standards by which incentives and credits are, are granted. And, um, we will be getting back in touch with you once we have a, a response, um, once we've revisited that, that effort. And me personally, I don't feel, I'm not a subject expert, so I know we are the commissioner of water and sewer, but I would be looking for you to manage within the budget and to do what's fair and, and appropriate. And my guess is that, uh, we're not the only town that started off, uh, with great intentions and then found that maybe the standards were stricter. They prohibited what we are trying to do, which is to encourage best practices. Um, so maybe our consultant, whose counsel we followed, also has some modification ideas from other municipalities from which we can borrow. And I wouldn't want to be involved in the minutia of whether a rain barrel versus a French drain gets a certain level of credits. I would really want to just look to the experts and say, please tell us that it's been done and what the outcome is. But that's how, that's how I am.
Well, that's what we would do. We, we would finalize the, the procedure, bring it back at your next meeting, or maybe not this one, but, you know, a further one. Um, and, um, I still don't, I, I did check with town council on this, and I think that this is just like with the, with the water and sewer, um, manuals that we, that I just sent you, it, it does not need a town meeting vote, but it does need a public hearing. And I think this is the same process with that. If we're changing a credit manual that the board voted in-
Well, it's part of the rates.
Right.
So we set the rates.
Correct.
So hearing would, I think, be required.
A hearing would be required, correct.
Um, so, I mean, what's going to happen is you're going to work with our colleagues there, our, our partners at Kleinfelder, develop a new modified credit policy. And then the question will be whether it is retroactive or prospective only. That's a policy decision for this board to make. And again, I mean, I'm looking for advice as to what is a meaningful, what would be a meaningful mitigation of stormwater. Um, and that's what I would look to the experts to try and deliver to me. But I do think it's important, this, this, this board is going to have to decide whether or not it's retroactive in effect. Um, and if it's prospective only, then we have to tell these folks. The only consideration I would say on this one is, um, it's, it's not, we have not determined whether we will be retroactive in the application of this credit policy.
That's correct.
So to give them the, somehow a notion that maybe they'll get relief out of this is, I don't want to do that, because it's not decided. And I also would say, I would add, if they would like to attend a hearing, they'll be notified, not, hearing on the credit policy, they'd be notified, and they can attend the hearing and say what they want to say about the credit policy. It's not an appeal of their, we're not looking to appeal their request. That, that is, that's what we're doing right now, is a policy review. Is that correct? That's what we're looking to do.
Right.
That is correct.
Right. And one part of that review would be determining if a change is made, would it be retroactive?
Is it going to be retroactive? Because if it's retroactive, then other people who did not apply for a credit, who might otherwise qualify for it, will be able to come forward.
Right. And that's why I didn't use any of that retroactive language in there. I think we actually originally had it and then we took it out.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing. Okay.
So, uh, what I would ask if you can give the town administrator your notes there, we will look at it. And he can give it to me tomorrow, and we'll... But the three bullet points, is that acceptable? I mean, I don't-
Well, simplifying the process-
Yes.
Would simply mean they have to show you less, I assume.
Correct.
Uh, addressing common deficiencies would tell them where other applications- Addressing common deficiencies would tell them where other applications came up short. If you want to show us how to get one, you gotta address this and this and this.
Correct.
And then whether or not we're gonna change the standard for granting a credit. I don't think we want, I don't think it implies that we're gonna change the maximum credit--
No.
--but the standard we might use to, to grant the credit.
Correct, because, I mean, we still, we, we have to live one more year with this $25,000 unless--
Well, we made a commitment to the town that we would not raise the rates.
That's right, that's correct.
So that is a consideration--
That's right.
--as, as to whether or not this is retroactive or prospective only.
Okay.
Which is why we'd want to operate any credits, I think, within the existing budget.
Yes.
Right. My question to you, Mr. McKay, is whether, how long the field's presentation is, or do I actually bring Mr. Weiss up? Then, what do you want to do? You guys duke it out.
I can just, I can quickly--
Okay.
--field's presentation.
So this is Agenda Item Number 064. From the community perspective, there is a lot of interest in this, which is, this board had a conversation with, I believe, representatives from two public, community sports groups who have an ambitious proposal to improve the fields that are adjacent to this building. And the board, in, in a broad conversation, said to them, this all sounds great in theory, but what we want to do is make sure that all the affected and interested stakeholders and potential budget contributors and sources of, whether it's players, or labor, or whatever, are all part of the discussion. And so that was kind of the parting conversation, I believe it was at the meeting on January 27th, and you're bringing us an update about that.
That's correct. Just quickly to update the, to get everybody involved, we have contacted every group, schools, Oak Grove Commission, I believe we're attending, if, if there's a meeting with Oak Grove later this month. We're still waiting on clarification on the funds that were asked for from the board to be allocated. We were in a pretty comfortable position, but we're still waiting for Rep. Linsky to respond in writing. I fully agree with the Finance Director that, that the funds should not be allocated without some direction of where they should be. Both of them, one of them is, what, almost four or five years, oh, actually even older than that, and the second one is three years, three to four years of funding. The good news is that we did check with the DCR and the state, and those funding, the funds that we have, they're ours. So that what they're looking for is that we appropriately spend the, the funds the way they were meant to be, as the contracts were stated. In the interim, the, the group that, that sat in front of you, they did go in front of the CPC, and they had, they asked for funding of $155,000. And the reasoning for that was to, to keep the project moving forward. They explained, we, we thought we'd still have an explanation where there's $50,000, whether it was gonna go to that funding, or it was gonna go someplace else. Whether the board was gonna use the $50,000 on whatever, pickleball courts, or whatever. So he did, he brought it to the CPC and asked for the fif, the total bud, the total budget's 170 something thousand. He took the 25,000 off that, from the planning board, and he also explained that if the 50,000 was coming from the board, then he would deduct that amount, and only asked the CPC for $125,000, or thereabouts, 100, or 100,000. They had many questions. They asked us to come back with more answers, and one being with getting, you know, input from the school department, which we have reached out to the school department and have not heard back from them. The proposal was sent to them. We were asked for a meeting as soon as possible to meet with them, but then all this happened.
Right.
Life happened.
And I think that's what's probably happening with your state legislator, too, because I've also placed a call to Representative Linsky's office and--
Correct. So that's a brief update, and with pushing it out, you know, if town meeting is pushed out, you know, an extra month, we may have a better proposal, package, and knowing we are the, the funds and a full board, when you say a full contingent of everyone agreeing upon this, because everybody that we have spoken to so far is in full agreement. We have letters from all the different playing agencies that, that have agreed that this is a good way to spend the money. But, not, I mean, the CPC has not approved it by no means.
Well, I think that what we're trying to do, this board, from recall, is that what we're trying to do is make sure that all the intended participants, the rec department, the schools, the various clubs, citizen at large, that there's an agreement on not just the field reconstruction plan, but the hierarchy of operational use, if there's time that's peeled off, for example, I know these are on town land, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But if there's time peeled off for school teams versus school practices versus Recreation Department, who's scheduling, who's, who owns scheduling, who establishes that hierarchy? How does, how does the revenue go? Do people know? Do they need a secret decoder ring to just to book a field? The big thing that I have, and I want to make sure everybody understands, is that there is a significant labor and cost burden to your department, assuming that the DPW, at the end of the day, owns the maintenance, the care and feeding, literally the care and feeding, of, of these fields. If all these organizations are benefiting from them from a revenue perspective or from a programmatic perspective, and you're holding the can on the, the cost of, of operational integrity, it seems to me that it's reasonable to expect a plan where everybody who is deriving benefit is also contributing to that cost, because that is a cost burden for which you do not have that in your DPW budget right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And Mr. Germaine at the CPC meeting did request for me to come up with a budget cost of what would be for the, a POCS department budget, and I've already, and that would be part of the presentation--
Okay.
--at the next presentation.
Can I just ask you, Mr. McKay, what's available in the CPC recreation bucket? Because that's where it has to come from, I assume.
There's, I believe, 50,000 in--
Available's the wrong term, but I mean, that in fact--
Categorized.
--they can't use the whole CPC budget for this. It can only be for a certain--
Correct. I believe there's 50,000 in the open space--
Yeah.
And then there's, they would have to take the rest of the funds from the open budget, the--
There's a recreation component, right, or?
Correct, and I, I think that's why it would go into the open space.
Yeah, okay. So, back to the matter is, there may or may not be adequate funding available from the community preservation reserves. Okay.
And we would be hoping that that presentation would include not just the acknowledgement that, oh, there's an annual cost to maintain of X, but that all these groups are not just having ideas about how to plan and, and build and use these fields cooperatively and collaboratively and equitably, but also how to fund that. So I think, I don't think we, we want to be the people asked the, of, for the solution as we just were with tennis and pickleball. What we're really hoping is that everybody in the field ecosystem can agree outside of this purview, and then simply just make the presentation, say, we agree that this is a great plan, and we've identified a way to kind of self-fund that, the impact to your department.
Correct. So the, the three uses of the fields, the main uses of the fields, other than the schools, if you look out today, you'll see a private contractor out there, you know, grooming the fields, the infields, flattening the fields, turning the fields over, and that's all being paid from Millis Youth Baseball. The town doesn't pay one cent for that. And they've been doing that since I've been here, probably since all our kids played in Millis Youth Baseball.
Mm-hmm.
And they've done it for years, and they, they continue. What I would propose is that they would stop doing that, and, and there would be a fee assessed to them, that they wouldn't have to worry about that any longer. Big, big task, if, if we want to take that on. And we do have costs of what other funds are paid for the fields that go into the Recreation Department, and how that, if we take all that funds out of the Recreation Department, what's gonna happen with, you know, if, if they go into a general fund to maintain the fields? What's gonna happen to those costs that, that the Recreation Department's gonna lose? Because they need them for their operational budget. And I certainly don't want to take those funds from, from that and just to maintain the, the fields and kill the Recreation Department, because I just not, I don't think anybody does. But that's, we will have all that in the budget, in, in the next presentation of when, again, the 30th is--
Hopefully.
Marathon Monday, right.
Yeah. We're interested in making this happen, too.
Sure, absolutely.
So we're not planning on being an obstructionist, we're just trying to get everybody to agree at the outset. Especially when we're creating an operational cost center that, right now, for which there is no, but, there is no designated line item.
So I will update this letter after tomorrow, and I will circulate it just for a quick review before we mail them out to the residents.
I don't need to see--
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Weiss, you have three items having to do with economic development, and two on economic development and one on energy, and we're very pleased to have you. Thank you. And then we have, like, three little items after this.
You cleared the room.
Sorry. And you have the longest ride. Thank you so much for sticking this out.
Oh, it's my pleasure, in my honor.
The first item is that you're bringing to us a contract to execute with a consultant who went through a review process by the Permanent Building Committee, correct?
Yes.
And was deemed to be a superior offering to identify potential feasibility, both feasible uses and revenue generation opportunities for the historic Lansing Millis Building, which is at 64 Exchange Street behind St. Thomas Church.
Yes, an adaptive reuse, as it were. I like to make sure we give credit to the Permanent Building Committee and their chairman, Wayne Colaco, who really put this together along with local architect--
Mark Proffer.
Mark Proffer, who really put the, together the RFQ, the referral for qualifications. And the architectural firm that was chosen is Spencer Sullivan &amp; Vote. They're from Somerville. They are highly qualified, if anyone is, and if you look on their website, you will see many projects from around the Commonwealth, and Mahat, and Middleborough, Bedford, and Lancaster, and Adams. So they have some beautiful projects out there, many of which look like this building, so this is a, a great group to be associated with. They will come back to us with a four-task approach, but that's several subtasks within each one of those. They're gonna give us some photographic documentation, some CAD drawings, they'll do a regulatory analysis, and it's a very thorough analysis in total of what this building can do for the town. And of course, finally, the final, and they'll be meeting a number of times with the PBC, so we'll have an opportunity to adapt and adjust as we go along. And of course, the final presentation will be made to the Permanent Building Committee as well as to this board.
And the Economic Development Committee will be involved also?
The Economic Development Committee will be involved. We had some input into the RFQ, so, and, and we'll especially keep, that committee will be keeping its eye on things, as I'll mention a little bit later on, because it's gonna, this building is gonna play a key part in what will happen in the not-so-distant future now with the Exchange Street and Main Street and general town center. So, tonight, I'm asking the board to approve and to, for each member to sign the feasibility contract with, with Spencer Sullivan &amp; Vote.
Has it been reviewed by council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it has.
I remember, we were both at, I think, the Permanent Building Committee meeting, and their credentials were pretty impressive, their package of historical reuse work.
Yeah. And the Town Council has signed off, approved a form, and the Finance Director has also approved that the funds are there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I guess the only, first of all, yes, I mean, I think Permanent Building Committee unanimously recommended this firm. They beat out all the other bidders, of which there were none.
Which there were none. Though several came to the building.
Well, there were several that looked at it, but nevertheless, were clearly qualified without any question. I guess I, I might have asked this at that meeting, too. What I'm a little sensitive to is the fee for the project is a lump sum of $25,000. I mean, typically, we would look for a not-to-exceed fee.